Good evening. At this time, we'd like to convene the City Council meeting for the city of Palo Alto for November 28th, 2022. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Burt?
Here.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Councilmember DuBois?
Here.
Councilmember Filso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
And Councilmember Tanaka. For the record, we have six present.
Thank you. So our first item tonight is agenda changes, additions and deletions, and we have none. So we'll move on to our second item, which is public comment on items that are not otherwise on the agenda. And we have members of the public who would wish to speak. Okay, we have two members of the public. Each will be allotted three minutes. And perhaps more members. Mr. Horowitz, welcome.
Thank you. Ken Horowitz, Homer Avenue, Palo Alto. Just want to comment on the schools, City Council liaison meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago. I did attend. I was the only member of the public and I had to make comments about Coverley. And I want to report that I'm somewhat encouraged because we're going to have three new council members and one new school board member. And even though it wasn't the top priority on the election, I think the new, the new members of both the council and the school board feel that Coverley is an issue that should be addressed. We've been kicking around the can for so many years. So a couple of things that in the next two years that need to be addressed is the lease that expires in 2024, which currently is around $3 million plus. The city contributes a little bit to a fund. And also the city pays the, some of the maintenance costs as well as some of the emergency repairs. So hopefully that's one item that will be addressed by the new council, as well as what's the future of Coverley, which I think it's about time it be addressed. And I was somewhat encouraged because at the meeting, the school liaison meeting, the city manager mentioned that it was one of his four Cs, along with climate, et cetera. So I was encouraged with that, as well as the superintendent, Mr. Austin, mentioned that his attorney is going to free up his schedule to deal with this issue. So I'm really encouraged and I'm hopeful that the new liaison committee, the new mayor will point the, the members. But I'm hopeful that it'll be more proactive, becoming more engaged. The meeting last, last meeting only lasted like 37 minutes. So it was more of a social affair. But I hope that the new liaison committee will take an active role to negotiate the future of Coverley. I think the Palo Altons, the city, the citizens need a shot in the arm. And I think developing the community center will give them that shot in the arm, just like the library bond was a big shot in the arm for Palo Altons many years ago. Thank you for your time. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rob Levitsky. And we will be closing off public comments at this time. We have a total of seven speakers. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While many of you were up packing up your stuff on last Wednesday to head off for your Thanksgiving weekend, this tree was being cut down at 1125 Byron Street. This is an oak tree, 30 inch diameter, in the backyard of the house near the back fence, not bothering anyone, not interfering with any structures, not dead or dying, but approved by Palo Alto City authorities to remove it. It's a case of a house in the front and the tree in the back. And by the end of Wednesday, it looked like this. Logs all over the backyard. You can see it. It's right near in the back by the fence. So if we go to the city website and we look at these tree removal list, for 1125 Byron, it says Cozy Oak 32 inch approved as part of a development project. Now, I'd like to compare that with what happened four years ago next door in Mountain View, a similar kind of thing, which was at 575 Sierra Avenue, where we had a house in the front and seven redwood trees in the back. And there was an uproar in the city because the city, the developer wanted to cut down those seven redwoods so that he could knock the front house down, same as the thing on Byron Street, and build a bigger house. Well, people were up in arms and I was one of the people who spoke to their Parks and Rec Commission. Almost everyone was in favor of leaving the trees alone. And unanimously, the Parks and Rec Commission of Mountain View voted to deny the appeal of the developer and let the trees stand. And so you might ask yourself, why is it so damn different between Menlo Park or Mountain View and Palo Alto? And I think it's just because the tree ordinance has been misinterpreted and is left to the planning commission and other people to interpret the statute as they will. And they had little technicalities like the buildable area, the building area, this and that. And the result is the trees are going down. I spent the last six years running around in circles with planning over the Castilla trees. And only those trees are only protected now because you council told them specifically that I want these trees saved at Castilla. And there's 13 trees, oaks and redwoods that are going to make it, I think, because of that. There's other trees going down in Palo Alto, just around the corner on Forest.
Thank you.
Are you calling me out on time? I got 10 seconds. There's a tree, and then the tree is gone. And when you look into it, no permit, no nothing, no action taken because, oh, well, it was an LLC and it was just too damn difficult to go after this guy. Same thing.
Thank you. We'll get to the next meeting.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Bill Ross, to be followed by Maya Perkesh.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a resident of Palo Alto. And although this is an area where the council, I don't think has gone much in the past, I think it's significant for our community that on Saturday night, David Shaw resigned as the football coach at Stanford University. In his tenure there, not only is he, was he the most successful Stanford football coach, but he's also someone who had the ability to influence students and student athletes, not only in the Palo Alto school system, but in neighborhood school systems, to accomplish things to the greatest of their ability. I also think he's the kind of individual that in our community, using the sense that I don't think the city council's ever used with respect to Stanford University, he did have a lot of influence. His views on how families deal with cancer in their families was known and conveyed to many members of not only the Stanford community, but also to individuals and households in Palo Alto. I don't know what the criteria is for certificates of participation by this council. I don't know that you could go back and establish any, any such thing. But if there's anyone that has had an influence, that's been a figure at Stanford, been on television multiple times, influenced students and student athletes, both male and female, I think it's Dennis Shaw. And I think that your council should consider a certificate of appreciation for him. I don't have any doubt, having grown up in the Midwest in a town very comparable to Bloomington, that if the same thing occurred at IU, that the city council there would have no hesitancy in recognizing the positive contributions of an individual that was their footballer or basketball coach. So that's the request. I would request that you do that. I think it's a significant thing. I think he's been a significant member of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maya Perkash, to be followed by Matt Schlegel. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Maya Perkash, and I'm a junior at Gunn High School and a member of the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition. I wanted to take a moment and remind the council that as we've come to this time of transition, it's really important to make sure that issues of climate stay at the forefront of our mind. The environment does not stop and wait, and we should not either. One step towards this that I'd love to highlight is approving the implementation plan of the SCAP in early December. This would include speedier grid modernization and construction, which are crucial to have stable and reliable infrastructure as we continue to electrify, along with increased education and awareness within the community, and reduced emissions as we near the 2024 goal of implementing the plan in its entirety. I know that a number of issues take priority within the council, and I ask that we continue to prioritize making this one of such priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Schlegel, to be followed by Aram James. Welcome.
Thank you. In the spirit of the season, I would like to thank city council and city staff for their tremendous efforts in raising awareness of the importance of having our community stop burning fossil fuels and thereby lowering greenhouse gas emissions. We will be taking concrete action in 2023 with the heat pump water heater program, replacing fossil fuel gas burning water heaters with clean, efficient, electric heat pump water heaters. And speaking of concrete, the council will be turning to developing 6,000 new residential units. And here is yet another opportunity to center the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. For this new development, we want to use materials that cause minimal greenhouse gas emissions. We want the new households to emit no new greenhouse gas. And ideally, these units will be made available to people who work in the city and who they themselves will minimize their commute emissions by living close to where and working close to where they reside. And I appreciate your keeping the minimization of greenhouse gas emissions top of mind as you consider this development and any new development in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aram James, to be followed by our final speaker, Liz Gardner. Welcome.
Oh, good evening. First of all, I'd like to propose that we think ahead. I would like Greg Tanaka to be our vice mayor in 2023. I've seen him and actually, there's a whole wide range of views that Greg and I have gone head to head with. But what I love about Greg Tanaka is he has these, these meetings, open meetings to members of the public like myself. Nobody else wants to do that. That's okay. But, you know, we discussed, and it went up on YouTube, reparations, the lack of an open, open police hiring process that Chicago stole from the community. We discussed tasers. We discussed canines. So I really think 2023, we should support Greg Tanaka for vice mayor, if not mayor, if Lydia wants to step down. Okay, so I sent you on a lot of stuff over the weekend on canines. And, you know, I got, there's a little thing called trial by ambush. After I spoke the last time and said that the canine unit had been closed down, and that was an article in the Post back on August 11th, police working dogless, you know, our city manager at Chicago said, well, you know, we had that money budgeted in there. Of course, he made that comment after I concluded my comment so that I couldn't rebut it. But I guess this is the opportunity to rebut it. We have four months, and I'm looking at the, the piece that came back on November 3rd, new police dog Cody hits the streets. Well, we could have had an open and public discussion whether we want these savagely trained police canines and often incompetently trained dog handlers on our streets. And I'll tell you, Andrew Bender, I've met with him in person, talked with him to my blue in the face. He does not want to address the racial component of these canines across the country, since we had, unfortunately, enslaved people in this country and before in Haiti and other, other countries. These vicious canines have been disproportionately attacking African Americans. And we don't want to discuss this in this town, any more than the, the police chief wanted to talk about the RIPA data. No comment last week. Consent searches, which is, are again racially loaded, pretext stops, prolonged attentions. Are you on probation or parole? That's a question that isn't asked to white people. That's a, the Palo Alto PD, when they stop a black or Hispanic, that's first question out of their mouth often. So if we're gonna, I'm going to continue this conversation about race and policing for the rest of this year, and you can be sure in 2023, I will be doing the same thing. And thank you very much. I hope you'll consider banning canines in Palo Alto, attack police canines, flesh eating canines. Thank you very much.
And our final speaker is Liz Gardner. Welcome.
Hi, Liz Gardner, Mayfield Place. I wanted to propose a question to you tonight, City Council, as you sit up there on your Diaz. And we, as public speakers, are coming out And we, as public speakers, are coming out with community comment. Who owns Palo Alto? There seems to be a strong concentration on protecting residential one zones. Yet Google, Facebook, Apple, Yahoo seem to own much of old Palo Alto, which is an R1 zone. I'm bringing this up because those who exist outside of R1 zones are hurting right now. Service workers, restaurant workers, those that work in retail. I am speaking about renters, rising rent costs, and the vulnerability of more and more rental properties being owned by large corporate entities. For example, my Mayfield complex, built by Segway Construction and managed by Related California, the soil is owned by Stanford, is a substandard complex. My unit in particular has been without code standard hot water since Thanksgiving. Our stove, a piece of equipment I use to cook for my family meals three times a day, is faulty. Yet the management has continued to defer this maintenance and has now failed a housing and urban development inspection. We need a housing department with near 50% renters living in Palo Alto. We need rent stabilization and along with the other discussed ordinances. Here, people living on the edge need some assurances from our city that they indeed care about our community, that we are working on this together. Jobs are insecure, housing is insecure, and both together has made a very tenuous and vulnerable situation for those living and working and renting within our borders. I want and desire the city to pay close attention to the situation as we move to a more and more robotic, algorithmic economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. And we're now moving to the consent calendar. Councilmember Cormac.
I'd like to register a no vote on item three, please.
Councilmember Tanaka.
No.
And council vice mayor Koo.
No on two. Yes.
Okay. All right. And do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on the consent calendar? Okay, our first speaker is Aram James. Welcome.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so item number five. I don't know who comes up with this stuff, but I call it the grooming, probably the Ed Chicada grooming act or the Uniformity of Opinion Act, maybe Molly Stump has a. Listen, you've got, you know, and I was very, very unpleased with the election outcome. I was happy that two women won, but I wanted a third woman. I didn't want somebody that's already been embedded in city council politics for eight years on the planning commission and look where we've gone with the general plan, nowhere. But that's, you know, that's what the voters decided on. But I wanted to say that I don't think Julie Luthcott-Haines or Vicky Benner, Benner, either one of those very extraordinary bright women who both of whom I voted for need to go through a class of the sort that's outlined in the memo behind number five. I think what it is really is an attempt by the city and neither one of those candidates now, city council elect members are going to be intimidated by Ed Chicada and Molly Stump and attempting to gag them and not to allow them to be independent members of the city council. I have all the faith in the world that there are going to be two of the strongest city council people we've seen in a very long time. Yeah, go ahead. Give them these classes on all these different items that's listed with the attachment, section one, introduction to city organization, council member specific information, legal update and considerations. I just am hoping that, and I know that both will do their own independent research on the issue, that this really isn't a thinly veiled effort to gag them on important critical issues, legal issues, talking out about.
Mr. James, are you speaking to?
Item number five? Yeah, sure. Look at the, look at the five. Did you check the memo out, Mr. Mayor? Because you're usually very.
Excuse me, I thought you said six. Go right ahead.
No, no, I apologize if I'm not clear. I'm talking about what I call the attempt to, you know, provide information which could be construed as an attempt to get these two council members to fall in line with the city attorney and the city manager's view on how everybody needs to follow their rules. I don't think that's going to happen. That's all I have to say about it tonight, but I think it's offensive. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
I will second it. And we have no votes being recorded on item two by Vice Mayor Koo, on item three by councilmember Cormac, and item number eight by councilmember Tanaka. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Filsa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka? And councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
And did councilmembers wish to speak to their no votes? Vice Mayor Koo?
Right. So after reading it, the draft ordinance, I really have an issue with the fee waivers that is continuing and continues until end of 2023. You know, these parking spaces are public property. We really haven't determined how it affects retail, although I am told by many retailers that does affect them. Not only retailers, but personal services. It also, to a certain level, discriminates against people with disabilities. And then there's a lack of enforcement of the pedestrian pathways and encroachment by private owners' personal properties into these pedestrian walkways. It's an imbalanced way of moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac? And councilmember Tanaka?
Can you guys hear me now? Sorry about that. Thanks. So number eight is the purchase of a new fire engine. And of course, in our community, we want to be safe. It's really important. But this fire engine only has 23,000 miles. And for a diesel engine, it's incredibly low miles. I did some research on how often do people replace fire engines? And it depends on a lot of things, but 23,000 miles is definitely on a very, very low end. It also depends on how much innovation there is, like if there are really new ways of pumping water or there's some sort of technology innovation that has occurred. And in the research I did, very little has happened, at least from when this was purchased. Now, if it was from the earlier time, then maybe. The reason given for replacing the system is because it says that the exhaust system, so I guess the muffler, maybe it's too noisy, maybe not as. I didn't specify what's the issue. But the new engine is costing $1.1 million, right? That's a lot of money. To me, it just seems like more effort should be done to actually replace the exhaust system or fix it because you could do quite a bit with $1.1 million. And the other thing is, I think, given that most of our fire trucks are kept indoors for long periods of time, we don't actually have that many fires in our city anymore, which is a good thing, which means we have pretty good building codes. You know, maybe what we should be doing is like we did with our hook and ladder. We should be thinking about joint purchasing with maybe Metal Park or Mountain View versus purchasing ourselves. In any case, given the slowing economy, the looming recession, all the layoffs that's been happening around us, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be spending additional money on buying a fire engine that only has 23,000 miles. Thanks.
Right. That concludes the consent calendar. So we will now move on to city manager comments. Mr. Chicada.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city clerk, for the assistance. Let's go to the next slide, please. Just have a few items of note for council and community awareness this evening. First off, an update related to the pandemic. The most substantive information here that's new is that the county of Santa Clara has actually created a new dashboard that includes wastewater data related to influenza. And we've provided a shortcut URL here so that members of the community can get direct access to it. Does provide an additional means of tracking the occurrence of cases, in this case of influenza here in Santa Clara County. And also just noting a few additional tips as, again, we have a number of ailments that are circulating through the community at this point in time. Next slide, please. Looking forward to the week and beyond, would, just as a reminder, point out that we have the city's annual tree lighting that will happen this Friday, 5:30 PM at Litton Plaza. In addition, on Saturday, December 3rd, will be the Coverly Art Studio, I'm sorry, the Palo Alto Art Center Studio Holiday Sale. And so an opportunity to pick up some really unique gifts and other items of interest. And that's Saturday, December 3rd, from 10 AM to 4 PM. Next slide, please. Also, hopefully, all saw this in the Uplift Local newsletter on Thursday. And in addition, we have now rolled out a series of promotions, really assisting local businesses, both small businesses as well as a variety of businesses. And information is available on our upliftlocal.org webpage, including just fantastic gift ideas as well as opportunities for experiences and nights out. Next slide, please. Oh, and then now turning to your agenda over the next couple of weeks. First, want to point out a change that we have just solidified that will affect your agenda next week on December 5th. We are adding a study session related to the Stanford Community Plan. This is the Santa Clara County's Stanford Community Plan. And we are able to secure assistance from County of Santa Clara staff to present what will be presented to the County Board of Supervisors the following week on December 13th. And this is a milestone in several months-long effort to provide an update for what the County of Santa Clara calls the Stanford Community Plan area. So we are looking forward to having county staff here, again, in advance of the full board hearing the item on the 13th. Want to specifically thank county supervisor Semidion in his assistance in securing this time slot for us. And so feedback provided from council members as well as community members will then be conveyed to the board at the following meeting. Okay, so that is related to next week's city council agenda. Let's move to the next slide, please. And so in order to accommodate that, we will proceed with the time-sensitive items of the 1700 Embarcadero Project Development Application as well as the Regional Water Quality Control Plant Facility Upgrade Contract that has now been heard by the Finance Committee. We will unfortunately have to defer the S cap, the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, Work Plan, item that was scheduled for next week. So that said, staff does feel that we have sufficient clarity to last, actually, through the beginning of next year related to the S cap. Then on the following week, December 12th, we will have a couple of items that, again, are also time-sensitive. There's the Electric Utilities Hydroelectric Rate Adjustment that will be heard by the Finance Committee tomorrow. And then the response to the grand jury's report related to ballot measures. This is the Santa Clara County Grand Jury that identifies follow-up from cities throughout Santa Clara County. And then finally, for your last meeting of this calendar year, December 19th, we have scheduled on your action agenda, the Fiber to the Premises Return Report following additional review by the Utility Advisory Committee and certification of election results. So that will effectively cover the agendas through the end of the calendar year. Then before I close, Mayor and council members, I just wanted to acknowledge the receipt of a big check that thanks to our Senator Josh Becker, the mayor received this ceremonial check a week ago on Saturday. This is from the state of California to support the completion of the Newell Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. Once again, really appreciate Senator Becker's support and will continue to keep him and other community members in the loop as that work proceeds. With that, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to item number nine, which is review of and direction to staff to submit the draft 2023 to 2031 Housing Element to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for its 90-day review. The Planning and Transportation Commission will participate in a joint meeting with the city council to discuss the draft housing element and environmental review. This action is not a project in accordance with the SEQA guidelines. Before we continue, councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. I will be recusing myself from this item. This year, Stanford through university through an affiliate entity was a source of income for me. It is reasonably foreseeable that the city's decisions regarding the housing element will have a material financial impact on Stanford's assets.
Thank you. And while we have planning commissioners joining us, I just wanted to go through what we anticipate as kind of the process that we'll have tonight. So we'll initially have a thorough presentation by city staff of the staff report. And then the council will hear from members of the Planning and Transportation of the Commission. And the reason going to be coming as a consensus recommendation of the commission is because they have not reviewed this current draft of the report as a commission. They had previously reviewed the goals and programs that the council took up a month plus ago and had made recommendations on that basis. But they have not convened as a body on this big draft. So Director Late, would you like to kick things off?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Burt, and good evening, city council. Good evening, Chair Lowing and Planning and Transportation Commissioners. We are here to present the draft housing elements. And I'm going to ask Tim Wong, our project manager, for this epic journey to lead us through a presentation, and then we'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor Burt and members of the council. Again, my name is Tim Wong, senior planner, and so happy to take you through this presentation. Next slide, please. So tonight, staff is requesting that the council, A, can. So tonight, staff is requesting that the council, A, can conduct a joint meeting. Secondly, to review and provide direction to staff in regards to certain certain added language, more specifically for added programs and other items. And then lastly, to direct staff to submit the draft to HCD for its review. Next slide, please. So real quickly, next slide. What is a housing element? It's one of the mandated elements in a general plan or for Palo Alto, the comprehensive plan. And it is the only element that requires approval by the state. Next slide. And for this new housing element cycle, this new upcoming six-cycle housing element, there is a new requirement, which is affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is a new state requirement that requires each jurisdiction to put in proactive fair housing measures to address the following topic areas such as fair housing enforcement, to minimize, to analyze patterns of segregation and to attempt to minimize those patterns, also to minimize disparities in access, also disproportionate housing needs. And lastly, to identify racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty and affluence and how to potentially break those down. But in Palo Alto, we do not have this fifth item. Next slide, please. And so another requirement, the council is well familiar with this, is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA for short. And in a nutshell, it is the city's fair share for this upcoming planning period through 2031. And this is a number that is determined by the state. Next slide, please. And so here are the RENA numbers for this upcoming sixth cycle, little over 6,000 units with approximately 2,400 units for very low, low, and I should throw in there, extremely low income households. And this is about a 300% increase than our fifth cycle RENA, which is little less than 2,000 units. Next slide. And also, the housing plan is a part of the housing element that contains the housing programs. And these programs are to spur affordable housing production, especially affordable housing production, in addition to, as mentioned, fair housing requirements. And these programs much must touch on each of these categories, housing preservation, affordable housing, housing development. You can see these different categories through the filter of these fair housing requirements, which makes this draft a little much more complex than the previous draft. But I'll go into some of these programs in a bit. Next slide, please. And so some details about the city's public review draft. Next slide. So just here's the composition of the housing element. And it starts with the executive summary. I'm sure you've read all 500 pages of the draft, but I'll just go over this for you. The executive summary introduction, housing needs, housing resources in which, as part of the housing resources, we need to provide justification for why our sites were selected. Housing constraints, which identify both governmental and non-governmental constraints. The housing plan, which we just elaborated to, that includes our goals, policies and programs. And lastly, it ends with the appendices, which includes our full sites list with detailed information and our AFFH analysis. Next slide. And just some high points. So as mentioned, the city council approved the sites in March of 22, 2022, and as part of that identified over 290 sites to help meet this, the city meet its RENA. And of significance is a much higher density proposed for the Research Office Limited Manufacturing, or ROLM Zone District for short, and General Manufacturing Zone Districts. And those are the areas that are basically bounded by Charleston and San Antonio against Highway 101. And just also to remind the council that the rezones, the upzoning for all these sites must be completed by January of 2024 to help meet our RENA. With these sites, we have proposed many sites to be upzoned. And again, those need to be completed by January of 2024. I'll talk about a update schedule that should have the council adopting mid-2023. So these zone amendments will probably come right on the tails of that adoption. Next slide. For programs, the council reviewed the goals, policies and programs in August of 2022. There are 26 programs with many implementing objectives for each of those programs. A highlight or a significant program is the Housing Incentive Program, or HIP for short. That's Program 3.4. This is the city's alternative to state density bonus. And currently, we are going through a financial and development feasibility study to look at what actual development standards would constitute a feasible program. And based on that study, we will be revising the development standards of the HIP. In addition, we are expanding areas where the HIP can be applied. And it's a substantial increase in area, RM zones included. And this is to be completed by December of 2024. Also, other programs include fair housing programs, which the city will conduct more robust outreach, including education workshops to both educate tenants and property managers slash landlords about fair housing rights and also tenant protections as directed by the council. And those should be implemented by December of 2023. Next slide. And the public review draft requirements do require a 30-day public review. And so the draft was released on November 7th and the deadline, if you will, or the end of the 30-day period is December 7th. As part of the 30-day public review, staff conducted a virtual November 16th community meeting where we highlighted different aspects of the draft and took community comments and questions. As part of the 30-day public review, we've also done extensive public outreach via email, social media, print ad, and also updating our, our website for the update. And for the public to submit comments, if you could, please use the heupdate@cityofpaloalto.org email. So we've dedicated an email to receive comments and for the public. Again, if you're going to make comments, please use this email. If you don't have access to email, please submit a written, submit a written correspondence via snail mail, if you, if you could. But we will only consider public comments through this email address. And then after the expiration of the 30-day review period, the city has 10 business days to respond, to review and to respond, if you will, to the comments. And what is meant by respond is the city will summarize these comments, whether these comments, you know, certain comments were put in the public review draft or revised the draft, or if some of these comments were considered and just chosen not to be included. But we must respond to each of the comments. And only after the public review can the city submit to HCD. HCD has two submittal periods. So after this 30-day review, we will be submitting to HCD for their initial 90-day review. And as part of that, we will complete the public comment section of the draft to summarize what staff did with all the comments that received prior to submittal to HCD. Next slide. And just to highlight, these are the additional programs that the council did not consider in their August meeting. Next slide. This is based on additional guidance from HCD and from our consultant that staff prepared for new programs. Next slide. Okay, thanks. And just to let the council know, staff anticipates adding more implementing objectives, not necessarily new policies or programs, but implementing objectives for additional, for the approved programs, especially for AFFH to the approved programs. Staff has been reviewing Southern California letters and now some Bay Area jurisdictions have received comment letters. And we're reviewing those comment letters too. And based on, based on those letters, we may need to add additional implementing objectives to our programs. But again, we do not anticipate any significant or substantive policy changes to the housing element. Again, it's more to add implementing objectives to meet HCD criteria or requirements for a more compliant housing element. Next slide. So the first program is a lot consolidation program. Because the city has such a high amount of smaller lots, smaller being less than 5,000, 10,000 square feet, HCD looks favorably upon a lot consolidation program where there's the potential to consolidate lots and hopefully have a greater, a more feasible project due to larger lots. The second program is, next slide, please, sorry. Objective standards for the South of Forest Coordinated Plan, better known as SOFA. Objective standards were recently adopted within the last year. However, the SOFA area was not included, so this is to fold in objective standards for SOFA. This helps add to spurring housing production by creating a more streamlined process. Next slide. Annual zoning updates. This is more of an HCD catch-all program where the state wants us to be compliant with state and federal law, whatever that may be in regards to housing. So this is a commitment to update the city's zoning ordinance at a minimum once a year to be in compliance or consistent with state and federal law. And the last, and next slide. The last one is, this is purely administrative, but required is that we must provide an adopted housing element to the water supplier within 30 days of adoption. And this is a state requirement, so we are adding this program in, but it's fairly easily achievable. So that's the fourth program. Next slide. And just wanted to touch on a quick schedule update. So next slide. So in the red, here we are, fall of 2022 with the public review of the draft housing element. As mentioned, we will be spending the next few weeks responding to comments and revising the draft in preparing it for HCD review. And that'll be in the winter of 2022, going through February of 23. Spring of 23, we're looking at the completion of environmental review as well as revising the housing element draft per HCD comments in anticipation for the city council to be ready to review and adopt in mid-2023. So that's our schedule. Next slide. And staff would just like to highlight the builder's remedy. I'm sure that the council has been hearing this. This, this builder's remedy has been circulating throughout the state in which this builder's remedy is part of the Housing Accountability Act, which allows a builder to potentially develop something that could be inconsistent with the city's zoning and general plan. But this applies to those jurisdictions that are out of compliance when and if the developer proposes to have a certain affordability percentage in the proposed development. And I believe the council has received additional information about the builder's remedy from the city attorney. But this is just a highlight. And again, this applies to those jurisdictions without a compliant housing element. Next slide. Next slide, please. So again, we're in the 30-day review period, which ends December 7th. So public, please get your comments in by that time at this email at heupdate@cityofpaloalto.org. Again, we have 10 business days to review and address the comments. And staff hopes to submit no later than December 22nd for HCD's 90-day review. When the, in February, when the letter comes back, staff will revise the draft per those comments, whatever they may be. And just to let you know that HCD does have a second 60-day review to review, to make sure that the city has revised their initial draft to be consistent with HCD's 90-day comments. Next slide. And so again, here is staff's recommendation. That concludes staff's presentation and be happy to answer any questions that the council or PTC may have.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to turn to the members of the PTC, initially Chair Lowing, and with an understanding that you haven't had the opportunity as a body to weigh in and make a consensus recommendation on, on this element. So we would just welcome your individual comments as well as any other follow-up you have from your previous review. Chair Lowing.
Is this live? Oh, great. Okay. Yes, thank you. I've now had about 18 months of experience with this housing element because I joined the working group with Tim 18 months ago. So I thought I'd just comment first on how that's evolved and what I, what I think is, is really there. It was just an excellent working group put together by council of appointed members that was a really good cross-section. They worked really hard and really effectively to kind of work on these things. And so, so did the PTC. When, when we got it next, we set up a ad hoc group. Let's see. All commissioners sitting here. Yeah, and Carrie Templeton as well. So we worked in detail and then we worked it from the dais in multiple meetings. In, in both of those groups, I just want to emphasize, particularly for the benefit of the public that's listening, there was always a focus on what are the real needs of Palo Alto citizens going forward for the next eight years. This was not, okay, how do we fulfill the mandate? We didn't even talk about the mandate on HEWG, HEWC for a while. And so I feel like at, at the end of the process here, it has very high integrity in terms of the priorities that are truly needed for us going forward. And we came up with some that matched the state, particularly emphasis on affordable housing, which came up very strong in the Housing Element Working Group. Then some other segments that had needs, like the growing senior population and some, some of our other special needs people. And then maybe as a surprise to the state, we also said we need some big houses here. Because when we have people move here, we'd like them to be, move here and then stay here and have families. So we actually do want some inventory, other, large houses as well. So I feel that the, the comprehensiveness of the review by both the bodies that I've been on really added a lot of integrity to the priorities here and feel pretty good about that. And I hope also the state feels good that, you know, we're compelling and in, in terms of the, the way we present this. So others?
Yeah, I want to add, one thing of the Housing Element Work Group really felt, one of the things of the Housing Element, oh, I'm Keith Rektall, I'm on PTC and I was also with Ed on the Housing Element Work Group. And on the Housing Element Work Group, one of the things that was really important to people was quality of life. We have these people coming into the community. We have a wonderful community here, great parks, great bike paths. And we just don't want to warehouse these people. There, we're entering them into the community. We want them to have the same type of amenities that we have. So that takes planning. You know, making a park is easier said than done. You have to assemble. You have to assemble lots unless you want to go with pocket parks, but that really limits the type of recreation you can have. So you have to assemble lots and plan that ahead of time before it gets built out, or you may not have room for a park. And so that's very challenging. It takes a lot of planning ahead of time, and this is not our land. And so we have to kind of look in the crystal ball and say, what are the landlords, what are the owners going to do? And that becomes very difficult. I did have one question for Tim about the presentation. For the builder's remedy, it's 20% lower income, which categories do they have to provide the?
For lower income, that would be 80% or below, 80% AMI or below.
Okay, up to 80%, which means 79%. Okay, thank you.
So I'm Bryna Chang, was clearly on the PTC, but also part of the PTC ad hoc. And I think as Commissioner Rektal has said before, what we're faced with now is a lot of, that the housing requirements are going to make everybody in the city uncomfortable. And that means we're probably going to need to go higher and denser than we have before. And what the PTC ad hoc discussion also reflected was to choose the right spots for that. And then all throughout, I think many of us on the PTC are very concerned about the planning that's necessary to make this happen, but in a way that where we can preserve quality of life and make quality of life palatable for all the newcomers as well. So planning area plans, which was heard a lot, we heard a lot about in the last election cycle. But given the large amounts of housing planned for the ROLM and GM zones, that that area, which is already really heavily impacted by traffic, it's going to require a lot more planning and work and maybe funding in order to make sure that we don't, that we have safe areas for people as well as don't create gridlock. And then even aside from that area, we've talked about, you know, densifying and increasing height in other transportation corridors, but the reality is that the public transportation infrastructure is pretty poor. And so as a city, we're going to have to plan to figure out that transportation element to make this all doable. I did have a question for Mr. Wong as well. The last iteration that the PTC saw of this did not have the quantified objectives for the programs. So I wondered, what are the consequences if we miss those quantified objectives? And how did we in general decide on those numbers? I recognize that it's a different question for every program, but they're fairly specific quantified objectives. So I wanted to just understand a little bit more about the process that staff went through for those, as well as the consequences.
Oh, very good. Before I respond to that, I would like to say that our consultant, Brenna Weatherby, is also with us to help answer some of these questions. But I believe that HCD, in terms of consequences, HCD is scrutinizing each jurisdiction's performance during the eight-year planning period much more heavily, if you will, especially production. And so if we do not meet our timeline, whatever that may be for those, that particular program, HCD and maybe now with their new enforcement division, could, that could be part of their responsibilities. I think, but there are definitely more consequences for not meeting those timelines. As for the different timelines for different programs, it was more working with Director Late about staffing workloads and kind of, I don't want to call it a triage, but what programs are the higher priorities? What priorities do we have to meet to be in compliance with HCD requirements? And then from there, if these requirements have hard timelines, those were the first priorities, such as rezoning to meet our arena, and then other programs kind of fell behind that based on its significance, if you will.
So, thank you, but I wasn't necessarily asking about the timelines, although that is useful information. It was the quantified objectives. So for example, for one of the new programs for expediting lot consolidation, our quantified objective is expedite four lot consolidation projects during the planning period. And so that's awfully specific and I didn't know. So I guess my first question is, is there a consequence from HCD if we don't meet that objective? And, you know, depending on how big the consequence is, how do we come up with those numbers? Do we feel, do we feel confident that we can can make those numbers? Is it important that we do? And we have similar, there's throughout the programs and goals, there are similar other really concrete goals, which is great for measurement sake, but I wondered what the implications were.
Well, as part of it, thank you very much for your question. For lot consolidation, it depends on, part of it is how robust the incentives are for lot consolidation. But in terms of the number four lot consolidation programs, that was more thinking that maybe you could do one lot consolidation every two years. So that seemed like a realistic milestone to be, that was also feasible, so.
Tim, this is Brenna. Would you like me to weigh in on the consequences a little bit?
Yeah, that would be great, thanks.
Sure, hi everyone, my name is Brenna Weatherby. I'm Director of Environmental and Long Range Planning with Rincon Consultants. We've been working with the city for almost two years now on this housing element. Just to address the question on consequences, it's really yet to be seen with some of these programs about how HCD will respond if cities don't meet their targets or the metrics that are laid out in the programs. However, what we've been told so far is that they're going to take more of, a softer approach, if you will. If metrics are not being met, that they will contact the city and work with that jurisdiction to see if the program can be changed in some way or if more can be added or more can be done to try and meet that metric. So we've had discussions with HCD and other jurisdictions, particularly regarding ADU units. And if the jurisdiction is not achieving production of ADU units at the rate that they anticipate, because it is an eight-year planning period, it's a long period. So what HCD has stated to us that they'll be doing is taking a look mid-cycle. And if things aren't on track with the production of units, then they'll be working with the jurisdiction to see what changes can be made. It may be more, more action items, it may be, you know, more targeted items. Maybe the action item is great in theory, but it's not targeted in the right spot within the city. So that's what we've been told so far, is that they will be reaching out, but it'll be a softer approach with trying to work with the jurisdiction to see what can be changed to get that metric back on track.
Commissioner Suma here. So thank you for inviting us to participate tonight. I just wanted to also give a shout out to the working group and staff who seem to do an almost impossible task very thoughtfully. And, and it's something we have to do by law. That said, I'm a little disappointed with the state, given the state auditor's report and differences of opinions from other experts. And some of the changes that we don't really know, like if we have vacancies, the COVID changes, if those are going to stick around, a lot of residential vacancies and/or the impact of working from home, whether that would stay. I was a little disappointed, they didn't reconsider some of these numbers that seem unachievable. That being said, we're moving ahead. I also agree with my colleagues that affordability was a really important thing because that's, as we all know, the real reason people can't live here, not because there isn't an empty unit, but because they can't afford it. I had two comments about the new additional programs, the lot consolidation program. Is that for commercial properties or multifamily and commercial?
Commissioner Suma, I would say what, it has to have a housing component to it, so mixed use or?
In our commercial districts, I meant to say, sorry. Commercial districts mostly or? I mean, I'm just asking, it wasn't?
Yeah, wherever, wherever they, any developer could take advantage of it to produce additional housing.
Okay, so I don't think we're talking about making bigger houses on bigger lots necessarily in our one, more for multifamily.
That is correct, it's strictly focused on more multifamily production.
Okay, thanks, that's what I was thinking. And then I also wanted to mention about that, something that I've often mentioned, that is the need for realistic transition zones that don't have negative impacts, so maintaining those. With the SOFA objective standards, I think SOFA has for so long been held up as one of the best planning exercises and implementations in the city. Just want to make very sure that when we do objective standards there, we don't somehow mess that up because it has been so successful. And then about, I had a question about the builder's remedy, which is the 20% at an up to 80% AMI. And within that 80%, is, could it all be 80, all of the 20% of the units? Could it be at 80% AMI or is it somehow distributed evenly or in some other preferable way within the percentage?
I think as long as a proposed 20% up, that doesn't exceed 80% AMI, I think that meets the builder's remedy, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. And, oh, one really specific question, I noticed that on the super cool interactive map that it still has the MacArthur Park site, 27 University as a site for redevelopment, but I noticed that's not in the big book now. So has that been taken off and it just hasn't been updated on the map?
Yes, good observation. The interactive map does need to be updated. If you see, it's probably been since April, so we do need, that kind of fell by the wayside as we focused on.
Okay, I just, it was clear from the nice little 500-page document here, but I just wanted to double check, thank you.
And Commissioner Templeton.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners for weighing in. I agree with the things that were relayed from our ad hoc members. I was also on the ad hoc committee. And so that we don't rehash what they have shared, I will add some learning that we had that may be helpful as the council considers what to do with these sites and this plan. One of the things that came up was where we can go taller. Commissioner Chang mentioned that we might want to go taller in certain places, or we might want to go denser in certain places. It's really important for us to maybe take some risks in certain sites that we could get more from, so that we don't have to constantly seek new sites. We don't have unlimited sites, as you all are very well aware. So we do have to in some areas where we can have a larger impact, think about where to strategically go higher or denser. So I think that's really going to be the solution to getting the numbers that are required is to really be very thoughtful and intentional about certain areas that are more appropriate. So areas we had talked about were areas near the transit center, areas near downtown. So that's, those are the areas of higher opportunity to think about. You know, did we take enough risk here? Did we go as far as we could in those places? And any place that we can build more, more densely or higher, where it's appropriate, kind of loosens up how we approach the other sites, so that we don't have to go as dense in areas where it's not as appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Commissioner Heckman.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. I think I want to start by acknowledging the extraordinary efforts of our staff led by Mr. Wong to prepare this draft for review by the members of the City of Palo Alto, our residents, as well as the elected officials in PTC. Our existing housing element is about 150 pages with a 35-page or so appendix. I don't know how many pages are in this new draft, but it looks to be about a ream of paper, about a ream of paper, and it's two-sided. So it could be coming close to 1,000 pages. And the reason it's so much larger, as Mr. Wong acknowledged in his presentation, is we have a remarkably more robust requirement from the HCD for what's required in the housing element and for staff in, you know, they haven't had eight years to work on this because a lot of these requirements are newer than that. But for staff to put this together and gotten it to this point, I think is a real achievement, and I want to applaud them for that. The mayor, when Mayor Burt described the PTC participation tonight, he was correct that we haven't had a chance to review as a body the housing element, which we have in draft. But one of the things that we were able to do as a group is review the, what's chapter five in the housing element, which are the goals, policies and programs. Although as Commissioner Chang mentioned, the detail in the programs, I don't think was available to us at the time we reviewed. But, but as I review this draft and look particularly at that chapter five, I see the planning commission's imprint on it. A lot of the improvements that we recommended were embraced by the council and we're appreciative of that. And I noticed one addition, I think, that we came up with, which I think will be useful, is in the programs, at the end of each objective, you'll see references to the primary goals and policies that are related to that objective. And so that cross connectivity was something that the commission thought was useful and staff put that together. And I do think that's a rather important chapter in the housing element because it's really our roadmap for accomplishing the things that we need to accomplish over this next eight-year period. So I was happy that we could participate and contribute that as the planning commission group. I don't have any questions of staff at this time and appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. So colleagues, at this time, if you have questions that you'd like to direct toward planning commissioners or based on the staff presentation, we can do so. And then when we complete this part of the meeting, we will have a short break and reconvene with just the council and hear from members of the public and then come back for our own deliberations and actions. So any questions that you have of planning commissioners? Or staff? Vice Mayor Koo.
Thank you. I also want to mention my appreciation for all the work that the ad hoc and the planning commissioners, as well as staff. Additionally, the members of the public as well, who have been involved in all of this, so appreciated and thank you. It's a very difficult decision and how, and to arrive at what you have arrived at today. So again, I want to acknowledge that. I have a question for Mr. Wong. The question about the builder's remedy and 20% of the residents are for affordable. You said 80%, but doesn't that also apply to 100% and 150%? If they used a builder's remedy, doesn't it also apply to the other AMIs, not just the 80% AMI?
Correct, I believe it's up to. Correct. I believe it's up to 100% for moderate, if they propose a moderate income, which is up to 120% AMI.
And then for the middle income, it would go up to the 150% AMI, right? So if a developer comes in using the builder's remedy, it can go up to 150% if they have that 20% of their units or dwelling units.
So, yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. So there's two ways to qualify. There are two ways to qualify for the, under the builder's remedy as, you know, we've, we've come to understand it. And I want to acknowledge that this is not a provision of law that's been implemented very often in the state. So there's still some learning going on with this, with this provision. But as we understand the, the provision to qualify that if the project includes 20% at the 80% AMI level, that is one qualifying criterion. The other is if they did 100% at 120% AMI, that would also qualify. So your scenario where 20% is at 80% AMI, the rest of those units could be market rate.
Okay, so the first 20 would be at 80% AMI and the remainder of those could be at 120 or 150% AMI.
There's two different scenarios. So, so one scenario is I'm a developer and I'm going to provide 20% at 80% AMI. That's a project. Another scenario is I'm going to provide all of my units at 120% AMI. That's another discrete option that, that, you know, potentially could be available to somebody. The 80% and 120% don't mix.
I see, I see. And of course, you know, looking at the AMIs, the area median incomes, right? That's developed by County of Santa Clara. And as income in the general area continues to rise or go higher, then these AMIs reduce, right? So there would be more people that, who are at this point, say, for example, at 80% AMI, as income levels go up, the AMI adjusts us. So now would have more people who used to be at 80% AMI now would fall into, what, 60? And so forth. So the concern now is, are we building enough of the low and very low or even in, in that category? Because people are just kind of falling behind. And so that's, that's, I'm sorry, a comment, but, you know, a concern for me. The other thing is, you know, you mentioned the SOFA area and and historical sites. Are historical sites or if they're on a list for historical, are they exempt from, are they not identified in this housing element?
So the various state laws that would seek to result in a development based on objective standards typically have a provision that excludes properties that are designated as resources. And so it would depend on if we're talking an SB 330 project or, or some other project. But typically, there's some carve-out for designated historic properties.
So, okay. As long as they're on the resource list, potentially, but we would have to develop that objective standard. Is that?
So the, right, so right now, SOFA is a coordinated area plan onto itself. It, it was never embedded into the zoning code. And, and when we went through our objective standards process, we changed the zoning code. But there's a whole other process of hearings and procedures that the city has in place to amend a coordinated area plan. That piece has not been done yet. So SB 35, the streamlining provision, SB 330, that's another one that calls for objective standards. Right now, SOFA is, we could only assess the objective standards if a qualifying SB 330 project were to come in. And a lot of that coordinated area plan has subjective criteria and findings. So there's a need to update that coordinated area plan.
Can I come back? Am I taking too long?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for that. So help me, I couldn't find it in the book. But are all our surface parking lots, the city's surface parking lots identified for housing in this element? Or just, how many of them?
Six parking lots are identified for downtown, two in the Catlab area.
Out of how, total, how many surface parking lots do we have?
I'm, I'm not sure how many parking lots we have in the city, but we specifically looked at the larger ones, larger-sighted parking lots, and that's how we came out with the six.
So when you're looking at the parking lots, has consideration been given for potential need in for staging or for, you know, I mean, like what we did at California Avenue for the garage and the public safety building? We had to pay rent to somebody else to use their parking lot for staging. I mean, are we kind of looking at assuring ourselves that we're not using up all of our public land? Where we would not have any more use for it in the future, as one of the commissioners said, you know, the land doesn't grow anymore and we don't have enough land. But I, I kind of look at this like everything is kind of allocated into housing.
Yeah, so again, I, I think that the Housing Element Working Group and the PTC spent a fair amount of time looking at these surface parking lots. And there was concern about having all of those sites be dedicated toward housing at this time. And in part, for what the reason you just mentioned is we don't know what the future holds and what our needs and interests might be. And so there was a subset of those, of those lots, I think six in total, that we've identified as potential housing opportunities. So that's, that's, it was intended to be focused in on something that is achievable and would still preserve our options for the other lots going forward.
Right. And, and just to make sure that people understand, you know, these are six surface parking lots that is for this upcoming cycle, which is the sixth cycle. There's still the seventh cycle. So kind of start wondering how we're going to do all of this, right? ROLM sites is also on the other side of the 101 in the, where the Baylands are. Do we have ROLMs on the other side of the 101? We don't have.
There are no identified housing sites.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. Oh, on the the housing element to be compliant or substantially compliant, does the EIR have to be also certified? Is it both housing element and the EIR that needs to be certified, or we can just certify the housing element?
So before the city council can take action, certify. For the city council to adopt, you need to have the completed environmental analysis. So we need to finish that environmental review before the city council can take action to adopt.
Okay, so walk me through the process. So tonight, we're just saying review, modify, then submit to HCD.
Yes.
And when does it come back for us to adopt and to see the EIR as well?
Right. So the, this, the state will have up to 90 days to review the document. At which time, we would expect to get a comment letter from HCD noting areas where there are some deficiencies in, in the plan. That is the case for every jurisdiction, you know, in California to date. So depending on those comments that we receive, we're going to need to make changes to the plan. And that, and those changes, if they're relatively straightforward that we can implement, we will go first to the Planning and Transportation Commission because they are obligated under state law to make a recommendation to the city council for the amendment to the comprehensive plan. That recommendation will come to the city council. During that process, we will be completing our environmental review. At this point, we don't know if it's an EIR. We're scoped for an EIR, but it may be something else because we have the comprehensive plan EIR that we've previously certified. So we'll be looking at that document and trying to understand the delta of changes between what was projected in that EIR versus what's projected in the housing element. And depending on the, the results of that, we will prepare the necessary environmental analysis to go forward.
And just one last clarifying question about the builder's remedy for the 20%. If the developer comes in with 20% of residential units are affordable, does 150% AMI qualify as well as, you know, when you gave the scenario of 120%? Does 150% AMI qualify as well?
I, I'm not aware of any provision of what we're calling the builder's remedy to, that includes 150% AMI. It's either 20% income restricted at 80% of area median income, or it is a 100% project, a sec, a different project altogether, a 100% project at 120% area median income, not more.
Not more. Okay, I think we need to make sure about that because I think we need to kind of, I think the attorney's office might want to weigh in on this, but also the 100% of residential units are affordable to moderate-income household at 20% AMI, that AMI, that looks like Alitalcal, right?
No, that's a different project. That, that was.
Would that be something like Alitalcal?
That would, that would not qualify.
That would not qualify.
Correct. And the reason that won't, would not qualify is that they did not provide, that, that, that project does not provide inclusionary housing at 80% AMI. One test, and it does not include 100% of the units deed-restricted at 120% AMI. That project is a market rate project where I think it's 20% of the units are deed-restricted at a local definition of what workforce housing is, local definition, at 140% AMI and 150% AMI. And to qualify, to meet the city's affordable housing obligation, they also paid into the 15% fee that was required for that project.
Okay, and just, thank you. Thank you for that differentiation. But can you please confirm with the attorney's office about the 150% AMI?
Certainly will. I, I think we're pretty clear on it, but thank you for that question and we'll follow up.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, hi. First of all, I also wanted to thank John, Tim, everybody in the planning department, consultants, the Housing Element Working Committee. As, as Ben said, this has been a 19-month progress, a project at least at this point. And just want to thank everybody for the hard work. I have questions really about some of the new programs that are proposed. On the SOFA change, the goal here would be to have objective standards that basically implement this old specific plan. I mean, would us, do we have to go back? Are there any other old plans that we need to do this for? You know, are there any side effects of messing around with SOFA at this point?
Thank you, thank you, councilmember. So as far as I know, and I welcome being corrected, but I believe the court, the SOFA plan is the only other coordinated area plan that we have in the city. So it's, except for the one, of course, that we're working on for North Ventura. The, the consequences of, are actually, I would say, more significant if we do nothing. Because if we do nothing, the subjective criteria that is set forth in that plan, unless we're able to convert it to objective standards, will not be realized or may not be realized in a development proposal. Because they're not objective. And the state law, depending on if there was a qualifying project to come forward, requires that a developer only meet the objective standards. So we're feeling that we need to, for two reasons. One, update the SOFA plan so that our interests of codifying these subjective standards into objective standards are met. That's one reason. Another reason is it helps with housing production if it is a more streamlined and clear process. And that's the other component of why we think this is an important program to add.
Okay. I'd like the work we've already done on objective standards would apply. I guess you would just be looking at the SOFA plan and kind of seeing if there's any additional objective standards to be added.
I, I think we would tailor this next effort based on the SOFA standards. Otherwise, and we heard a commenter, or maybe it was one of our commissioners mentioned, we want to capture all the good work that was done with that planning initiative and not just, you know, unilaterally apply a set of standards that apply elsewhere in the city. So we would take a more tailored approach.
Yep. We did have some other plans. Maybe they had not been adopted, but things like a PTOD district, you know, is there anything subjective in those?
So that would be, yeah, we can take a look at that. That's not a coordinated area plan per se. It is, it would fall under, most likely would fall under our objective standards that the council recently adopted. Except that in that area, we allow for greater height and density. And so the objective standards that were approved would accommodate that.
Right. Okay, yeah. Councilmember Burt, or Vice Mayor Burt may know about others. On, on the other program, the way I read it basically says that we'll comply with state laws, which we already do. I was wondering why we felt like we needed to add that program. I mean, we already update all of our zoning when state laws change. Could you talk about that one?
So thank you, Councilmember DuBois. In regards to this, that particular program, it is more to say that we will be, if you will, proactive in updating it in a timely fashion at, at a minimum annually to be in compliance with state or federal law.
Again, it feels like we do that. I, I just wonder if are we, are we committing ourselves, if, if there were a law that we felt was unconstitutional and the city wanted to fight it, could somebody say, well, you're fighting it, but you're also in violation of your housing element because you added this program? Like what? What is the advantage of being explicit about that? Versus kind of our past policy, which has been to be compliant with federal and state law?
Yeah, I, I understand your, your question and, and it may have a few different dimensions to it. And I want to tee up Brenna if she has some insight as to what HCD is looking for in that particular program. I, I will note that we, we, we don't have an annual, we, we did a one-time annual effort where I think we probably bit off more than we could chew with what we referred to as an omnibus suite of amendments many, many years ago. And we haven't really come back and, and done that again. You know, for a variety of reasons, but what we do implement is, and you see this most acutely with the accessory dwelling unit state regulations, where in that particular provision, it invalidates this local jurisdiction's ADU regulations if the local jurisdiction doesn't update the standards before the start of the next year. So that, that's kind of a unique one. And so that's the one that you see and we'll see again in December on the council's agendas. But otherwise, we, we, we amend the code as, as we're able to, not necessarily annually unless compelled to do so. Brenna, did you have any other insight?
I mean, I think just, really, HCD is looking for that commitment. So requiring that program forces the commitment of jurisdictions to make those changes. Palo Alto makes those changes on a regular basis. Not all jurisdictions do. So it, it was easier for them just to require across the board that sort of program rather than not requiring it and not getting that commitment from some of the jurisdictions that don't follow through with that. rather than not requiring it and not getting that commitment from some of the jurisdictions that don't follow through with that.
And I don't, the city attorney has stepped away to provide visual access between the commissioners and the council. But when she returns, could probably speak to the legal question that you had. I don't believe that we would. I would think that we would be able to do both things if we were finding that the state law, you know, conflicted with some constitutional right or other assertion that the city might make.
Yeah, okay. It just seems really strange. We state law already supersedes city law when necessary and having this additional requirement. It's still not clear why they're asking for that. And then the last one, I just wanted to get clarity on the lot consolidation program. And maybe it was just the way it was worded. I mean, are we saying that people would get the benefits listed there? Smaller setbacks, you know, less open space, only when they do a lot consolidation? Or because it seemed to be, I don't know if you want to pull up that slide. It wasn't clear to me the way it was worded. If we were just giving away smaller setbacks, less open space, the, you know, were we requiring a lot consolidation or was that applying kind of across the board?
So there is a couple of things going on. We, Tim had spoken about the housing incentive program. And that is something that we are working on and will need to implement in 2024 or by 2024. We're not relying on those numbers for RENA per se, but we are, have identified some of our standards as perhaps being a barrier to housing production. And so we want to use the housing incentive program to reduce or eliminate those barriers, which will include, I would anticipate, changes to height, changes to setbacks, and some of the things that you see noted in this program. And there will be a public review process before the Planning and Transportation Commission and the City Council, before anything like that would ever get implemented. A similar concept is looking to be employed for lot consolidation. And there is some details that obviously still need to be worked out. But the two, we want property owners who own different lots to see that the city is, really wants to see housing here and that their cooperation to merge the parcels or sell the parcels or in partnership, you know, join the parcels to produce housing, housing that would be economically an incentive for them to do so. So we, if they consolidate, they would be subject to this. And I believe we're even exploring some kind of a sliding scale potentially of incentives based on the size of the lot or the number of lots consolidated. So those are some details that we'll need to sort through.
So if you could pull up slide 16, just want to make sure I understood what you just said. The program A, lot consolidation. There's nothing in that paragraph that says you're consolidating lots. Are you saying that that just applies to all lots?
So there's two As, I apologize, on the slide.
The one of the proposed program A, lot consolidation, the first paragraph.
Oh, okay, there's three, actually three As.
Lot of As.
Okay. So in that first paragraph, your question is, is this limited to just consolidated lots?
It doesn't say, it doesn't say, I mean, the title of it's lot consolidation, but it doesn't say you get these things when you consolidate lots.
It just says, yeah, we, that would be the intent, is that if you consolidate lots, you get these, you get these benefits. Not just if your lots are already 10,000 square feet, you don't get these benefits. Though there may be some zoning changes that we recommend based on the analysis that we're doing. Separate, separate from this program.
Okay, yeah, if you could just be really clear, and I guess like you said, it just needs a little more fleshing out. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the opportunity to serve on the Housing Element ad hoc. So I had the opportunity to ask and have most of my questions answered through that process. But I have a few more questions, but first just want to, again, kind of thank, thank staff, especially Tim. You are wonderful to work with through that entire process. So I thank you for breaking it down into simple terms, being able to work with us, answer our questions as well as work with the community. You took a process that I thought was going to be absolutely dreadful and turned it into a very pleasant one. So I thank you for your leadership on that. Working group was as incredible, PTC. And I was like Commissioner Suma, when I thought, when we started this activity of having to identify over 6,000 housing sites, I thought we had as much of a chance of identifying those sites as I did in getting Taylor Swift tickets, which was, which was zero. So unfortunate. But but we found a way to be able to identify those housing sites. So I think that's really, really incredible. And in addition to identifying those sites, some of the policies and programs that we're putting forth have been long overdue. Things like the Palmer fix, opportunity to be able to ensure that new affordable housing units are required to have a particular percentage, be below market rate, is going to do a lot. And, you know, and I'm also grateful for for certain things that the state is requiring a lot of cities to be, to do. I think the affirmatively furthering fair housing clearly is going to be a challenge, but it's something that we and others have not been doing enough for. And I think this is an opportunity for for us and the rest of the state to be able to address those challenges. So I think there's going to be a lot of good here. I also, of course, have my frustrations as well, which I will hold off until we get to to more of our comments. But but first, I did want to just thank everybody involved in this impressive that we are at this this level. So just a few remaining questions. Kind of going back to this AMI discussion with the builders remedy. The one thing I want to be clear on for the AMI, do we know, is that county AMI or is that the city AMI?
Councilmember Stone, that would be county AMI.
Thank you. And then, so if a city is determined to be out of compliance by a court, this may be a question for our city attorney. I understand that the court must then issue a particular remedy. They have a menu to choose from, but ultimately it strips a jurisdiction of local control and essentially permits, my understanding, all housing projects essentially by right. Do we know, is there an affordability requirement for those housing projects by right under that court issued remedy?
So maybe before Molly responds, let's, do you have the three remedies? I think it's in the staff report. So let's, let's go over those three remedies. But I want to preface remarks by saying, long before that happens, I would expect that the city, in consultation with HCD, will be working toward a solution before it even got to that area where there is a dispute and a dispute such where, such that we're dealing with this at a court level. So do you have the three? Okay, so Molly's got the three, and I believe they are up to the court's discretion.
Right. So the short answer is we will have many opportunities and we will make many efforts and we will not find ourselves in this position. But it is worth understanding what the consequences could be if we were not to do those things. And that's why we have clearly laid them out in staff report. So the remedies that are available to the court are suspension of the authority to issue building permits or related permits. And that can be for any kind of building, even including a residential remodel or installment of a heat pump water heater, for example. Suspension of the jurisdiction's authority to grant zoning changes, variances, and MAP approvals, and then mandated approval of residential housing projects at the court's discretion. So the court can essentially step in for the planning function.
Right, but more specifically, when the, if the court were to step in, and I love to hear the optimism from staff that we're not going to get to that point, I don't anticipate we will. But in that circumstance, if the if the court were to step in, do we know, is there any type of affordability requirement that is a part of that? Because I mean, from here, it just looks like they strip local control. I think one of the things that we offer as a city, which I am not seeing included in much of these state offerings, is greater affordability requirements. Do we know, are the courts going to remove those or require a particular threshold of that?
Right, we don't. They're not required to, and the court's remedial authority is very broad. This initial, what's been called the builder's remedy. So this initial ability of an owner developer to propose a project does have affordability requirements, which were discussed earlier in response to the vice mayor's concerns.
Okay. And then Director Lee, just one final question to you. I know we've, I've asked this question, but I think good for just kind of to ground us in our conversation tonight as a reminder. How, what percentage of the time does the state meet its market rate housing goals each year?
The state or the city?
Well, how about both?
I don't know that I can speak for the state. Brenna, I don't know if you've got some some information on that. But at the local level, the market rate housing, we've consistently been able to meet those those numbers.
Great. And Brenna, do you know for the state?
I do not. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. I frequently heard it's about the same, that the state traditionally meets those targets. But good to reconfirm that. And then as far as affordable housing targets, what do we see across the board? I know we don't do well at the city level. How about at the state level? I guess, has there ever been a year where the state has met its affordable housing targets? Maybe that's the simpler question.
Probably not. But Brenna, do you have insight?
I don't know. It's something we could do a little bit of research on and get back to you, but I don't know offhand.
Okay, not a problem. Thanks. I just wanted to kind of make that point. I think it'll help us in our conversation. That's it for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, I was going to ask exactly the first question that Councilmember DuBois did, so that's pretty much taken care of. I did want to ask on the lot consolidation issue, which, you know, it seems like, you know, that's a known obstacle. But but there's a lot of moving parts to change that. And I'm wondering, you know, Southern California is a year ahead of us, and this must have come up down there. Is there anything we can learn from the experience in Southern California about sort of mechanisms to address this?
Yes, absolutely. And we've been studying what's been taking place in the SCAG region. Brenna, do you have any particular insight as to some specificity? I think, Councilmember, it's along the lines of what we've articulated in the paragraph and the details of which we would need to sort out for the local market. But Brenna, we want to give you an opportunity.
I'm sorry, can you repeat exactly the information you're looking for from Southern California?
Just solutions toward lot consolidations or mechanisms that have worked in Southern California for lot consolidation.
Yeah, I mean, I think the measures that the city has included in the housing element so far are what we have been seeing throughout Southern California and what have been acceptable. HCD is really looking at trends. And so if there is that trend of lot consolidation being used to to create lots for, to accommodate more units, then they are, they look favorably towards that approach. But again, the specifics behind the program itself are really, what we've included here is really what we've included in other jurisdictions, and HCD has received that favorably.
Thanks.
Okay, let me just follow up first on a small question on that lot consolidation item. When we're talking about having reduced setbacks and reduced lot coverage, on the one hand, I can see that would work very well if you say we have existing multifamily neighborhoods and we want to encourage lot consolidation. Currently, they have setbacks between the two lots. They also have, because that side yard setback that exists from lot A to lot B, they also don't have lot coverage there. So that's, that's kind of a no brainer to, you've eliminated setbacks between those two halves of the property. They're now one. You have greater lot coverage because you don't have those side yard setbacks. But are you talking here about additional setback reductions? That if you combine the lot, it means that you don't have a rear setback or a front setback like you formerly would?
Yeah, so what we're potentially, I guess, is the answer. And we don't have the exact provisions because we're still trying to figure out what they are. But what we're experiencing, or what we appear to be experiencing, is the existing codes do not provide sufficient incentive for two property owners to either one sell or the other one, you know, or partner. So we're trying to find how we could make that a better, more of an incentive to do so.
Okay, so it's not fleshed out yet. This is, these are potentially knobs that you would turn, but not necessarily ones.
That's right. We're looking at a variety of variables that would make a project work physically and two economically.
Okay, thanks. And then when we looked at the housing sites at previous council meeting, we had a discussion about first that we've gone through this process and identified the 6,086 plus an extra 15% almost. And that's a great achievement. But we also had discussion on on two other aspects of the site selection. One was a desirability to reconsider certain of the locations, like our downtown areas, which weren't selected as sites, in part because we'd really have to do some zoning changes to be able to facilitate that and incentivize housing in those areas. But but they're really desirable areas to add housing. We have to do zoning updates for the other, many of the other housing sites as well. So even though those sites are not specifically included in our inventory, would we need to have, provide any program direction tonight to further staff's focus on including upzoning in those areas? And I will add that we, you know, we know that over the course of either the review or the ensuing years, many of those housing sites that we identify could run into obstacles, and we have to come up with other sites to replace them. So those are additional reasons why moving forward with incentivizing housing in the downtowns still may be a good thing, even if we haven't identified them at this point in time in our housing sites inventory. So what action would we need to do tonight to kind of further that process?
So my initial response is you probably don't have to do anything right now. And principally because the comprehensive plan, land use element, already has a program to do a downtown coordinated area plan. So we have that on our sort of task list. It just hasn't been prioritized at the moment. And in that coordinated area plan, I'm sure we would address a number of issues, including housing and where housing could go. If you wanted to provide more direction in that regard, you certainly could add a program to, and we don't have to come up with a language tonight, that just general direction would be sufficient, to explore additional sites in the downtown area to, you know, for achieve more housing, you know, production. So something like that, we can work out some language details.
That sounds good because even though it would be ideal to have that upzoning and zoning changes tied to a coordinated area plan. We have a number of prospective coordinated area plans. They're very extensive processes. We've referred to the SOFA plan process, and we've had more recently the NV cap, and they've all been two-plus years. And so I think we should recognize that anything that is going to be subsequent to a coordinated area plan is in all likelihood not going to be is in all likelihood not going to be giving us near term results, even if we can work to streamline that coordinated area plan process, which I hope we will do.
Yeah, can I just add one more component? So I I will also note that the city council, I want to say back in June, gave staff direction to apply for a grant or accept a grant for a downtown housing plan. And that's an initiative where we've received a bid, and we're going to come back to the city council in January. It's, it was a four three vote at the time to proceed on that effort. But the the grant of 800,000, as we noted, was, it's a good grant, but it may not go far enough to implement the plan. So the city council in in January or February will have a chance to decide if you want to pursue that initiative, and that would actually fall right into the the conversation that you're having about focusing housing downtown.
Thank you. And then in other prospective housing sites, we have, we did identify within the ROLM districts prospective sites which would need zoning upgrades to accommodate them. But we didn't do anything to address facilitating housing in the Stanford Research Park, the 700 acres of low density development, 0.3 to 0.4 floor area ratio, low density development on 700 acres when we say we we don't have much developable land in Palo Alto. You've maybe heard me say this before, but I just want to get it out there. And and those, that research park is not identified as for any of the housing sites in the inventory, to my disappointment. But nevertheless, that doesn't preclude us from having housing in that land over the next eight years, especially if we have to identify additional housing sites because some don't materialize. Currently, we have a conditional use permit requirement on housing there. That was only enacted in 2006 or '07, really because we were having a wave of housing at locations that hadn't been identified, primarily out in the the East Metal Circle area and others, in those commercial lands that weren't near transit, that we had schools overflowing, all those issues. But it was added to the Stanford Research Park, which had historically had housing by right since its inception, just none had ever gotten built there. We certainly have to look at incompatible uses for industrial processes wherever we add housing, so it may not be applicable for all of the research park. But if we wanted to begin a process of removing the conditional use permit for housing in the research park in appropriate areas, would that be added as a program under tonight's discussion? Or what would be the process to do that?
Yeah, so I I think, thank you, Mayor, for that question. I I think I'd want to take another look at our our programs. I believe it would fall under a program as an implementation objective or action to rezone RP to permit housing as a permitted use as opposed to a conditionally permitted use. I don't think we would need a full program, but rather slide it into an existing program. In fact, we have a program dealing with Stanford lands, we'd probably slide it under that one right there.
Good, and that would only be for portions of the research park where we didn't have incompatible uses?
That's right, we could include some some provisions about that as well. And then, again, just like any of these other implementing policies, there's a public process, planning commission, city council, before anything would get adopted.
Okay, and, well, now I'm running long. Well, let me just add one other question that I brought up at a previous meeting, and that's really related to the affirmatively furthering fair housing, or the AFFH component. And I just want to commend the the thorough report that's the final segment of the element. I do have a number of small comments on it to just make it more accurate, which I can provide some of that offline. But one issue that I brought up before is the potential for us to have within our affordable housing eligibility requirements for qualification for the waitlist, basically, is a preference for historically disadvantaged communities. And so if we wanted to include that within our element here, this section, would that be appropriately appropriate to add tonight as a program under the understanding that that the city attorney had clarified that we'll have certain legal constraints on what we can and can't do there, but a program within those legal constraints?
So yes, I we do have that program dealing with AFFH, and we would certainly consult with the city attorney's office and our consultants to develop some language that could capture the city's interest. If you do want to do that, that would be helpful to have that as part of a motion at the end of the evening, directing staff to incorporate that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes this go around of questions and our portion of the meeting with the Planning and Transportation Commission. I want to thank all of them for their hard work on that. We're going to take a short break, and then we'll come back and take public comments and then go into our deliberation and and motions. So it's 7:06, and so we'll reconvene at 7:15. So at this time, we will begin, we're reconvening the meeting. At this time, we'll open up comments from members of the public on item number nine, our draft housing element. And see, we have seven speakers so far. Oh, and I see it has five minutes. All right, our first speaker is Hamilton Hitchens, to be followed by Liz Gardner. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm a member of the housing element, but this is working group, but these are my personal comments. I just wanted to start by giving a shout out to Tim Wong, who has led this process from the staff, who did a great job not only with his leadership, but also with facilitating the conversations during our working groups, and also to Jonathan for providing a lot of insightful expertise. I have three comments. The first is about building affordable housing over parking lots. It's one of the few opportunities for the city to directly create very low income rental units in Palo Alto. The city council passed a motion that said these sites need to contain 100% affordable housing, but there's no minimum percentage in the housing element, nor in the RFP the city is issuing. I understand the city staff is concerned that the current density of 50 units per acre would not pencil out as a sales supported project, and thus are considering other uses than below market housing. However, the goal is to attract funds for affordable housing from nonprofits, state and federal, to complement our use of public lands. And not doing so would be a huge miss opportunity that results in less overall below market housing in Palo Alto. So I ask council to please add a minimum percentage of 100, or at least 75% below market housing to program 1.4A, allow for higher density than 50 units per acre for these projects, and require a robust outside funding component. My second comment is about Stanford property at 3,300 El Camino, which will be upzoned to 60 units per acre for housing. Please do not allow Please do not allow them to also build office on top of that higher-density housing, as this just erases the affordability gains for this project. Please do this by updating project or program 1.5C. And lastly, the GM and ROM zones near 101 in San Antonio are ideal sites for new housing because they are large and thus allow economies of scale. What going higher has minimal impacts. There are also older buildings, which are much more economically viable to tear down and rebuild. These sites are biking distance to Google. Almost all housing in Palo Alto comes from redevelopment, and these sites are very suitable, so please leave them in the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Gardner, to be followed by Lauren Bigelow. Welcome.
Hi, I hope I get 10 more seconds like Mr. Hitchens did. I would like to, I guess, debate what Mr. Hitchens said as far as the ROM district. Is he assuming everybody is going to be biking to Google in the R O L M C O M industrial area? I'm really confused by that. So what does our service workers do for you? Give you and your lives. Where is our city economy as it relates to planned and pipeline home projects? What is meant by quote-unquote "affordable"? Define, please. There's been an ask for the city development department to actually define what affordable is. At this point, it is a hundred and about $135,000 to $160,000 to rent an 800-square-foot, 1-2B, 1-bathroom apartment on Alma. So it is absolutely necessary that we have a rent stabilization for the health and safety to guide our community to grow and belong as active members and residents of the city. Paying 50% to 75% of our income to rent is totally unacceptable. Taking or removing housing sites from rich, transit, climate-friendly, close-to-walking and shopping areas like Frye's site, which is an RM30-zoned area 30 years ago, or University, or Cal Ave Surface City-owned parking lots. These are absolutely necessary to develop housing. Service workers who support the local high earners' subsistence are getting the short end of the sticks. And are, you know, there's, there's 4,000 homes being pushed onto a sea-level rise, climate unfriendly on a freeway, and one and a half miles from schools, public transit, city services, public parks and playgrounds. Libraries is not the answer. R O L M, C O M, and industrial are far from feasible for climate change, children, elderly, disabled. This site is far away from city centers on a high-vehicle-traffic areas' pollution for vulnerable populations with health challenges, as well as no development plan for a planned community that connects residents with city services, which are in place to serve residents. Why is the city removing wealthy, climate-safe areas from the city center? Service workers are very much living on the edge. Please address this as we move forward with this housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Lauren.
And commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to staff for all their hard work on the housing element. My name is Lauren Bigelow, and I am the board president for Palo Alto Renters Association, or PARA for short, which was formed in 2020 as a response to lack of renter representation in Palo Alto's civic discourse. After reading through the demographic information in the draft housing element, I was surprised to see the information in figure ES5 on page 18, which showed that our renters have a significantly lower median income than renters across all of Santa Clara County, meaning that many of our renters have a higher need and are at greater risk of displacement than renters anywhere else in Santa Clara County. So I crunched some of PARA's numbers. Last year, we counseled 44 individual households for a variety of reasons. This winter, we helped mitigate the mass evictions at Lane Court, which impacted more than 100 Palo Altons. And this year, we've counseled more than 30 individual tenants thus far. Considering that we do this as a young nonprofit with a small staff and budget, coupled with the fact that there are 11,764 renter households in Palo Alto, the city's objective to educate 20 tenants and landlords annually seems like it is missing at least one, if not two, zeros. Educating 20 renters and landlords is less than 1% of renters alone, and fewer renters than we counsel annually. Renters in the city deserve to understand their rights and feel like less of an afterthought in this planning process. While there were protections included in the last three pages of the housing element, there were no identifiable metrics or milestones about how these programs or policies would be achieved, or even definitions in terms of what these programs mean. I personally recognize many of these terms because I spent two years with the city studying and recommending these renter protections. But it should be more comprehensible for all Palo Altons and not require years of study to be accessible. As we think towards the future with the housing element, and where these 6,086 state mandated units will go, consider that many of these built units will be rental units, which will bring us even closer to a renter majority. We need to do more, both to keep our renters housed and to build more housing so that we can follow through with our desire that Palo Alto be a diverse and inclusive community with an affordable cost of living. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing your discussion tonight.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Stuart Klein, to be followed by Greg Schmidt. Stuart Klein?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can.
Sorry. Good evening, council members and staff, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Stuart Klein from the Campus for Jewish Life. The campus is the large structure on San Antonio Road and contains Moldau senior residences and the Oshman Family Jewish Community Center. We urge the city to comprehensively plan for safety and amenities. Specifically, at East Charleston and Fabian Way, there's a need for bicycle safety due to the 101 Bike Bridge and Cahela High School, and also for pedestrian safety, because seniors from Moldau walk in the neighborhood, and many of them walk slowly and use canes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gregory Schmidt, to be followed by Bob Moss. Welcome.
Good evening. Why is a written and verbal response to questions in the housing element important? Because packet pages 98, 99 state clearly that questions formally submitted by tonight will receive a written response from the city and possibly HCD. PAS has raised five written questions. The basic thousand. They concluded that aggressive concentrated jobs and housing growth in already jobs-rich areas like Silicon Valley was to be the basis of their forecast. Be explicit in how the world has changed dramatically since then. Two, note, the state has ruled that there could be no public discussion of reducing job growth during the eight years of the housing cycle. Will this affect compliance goals of business builders, owners? Three, there is no written commitment of the three biggest gainers from concentrated job growth, big businesses, state government, and Stanford, to pay their fair share of affordable housing and infrastructure costs. What share will residents pay of these affordable housing and infrastructure costs? Four, clearly concentrated housing near jobs means less family housing. Put out an annual list of the share of new housing that's two bedrooms or more. Finally, HCD threatens to override local zoning control and reduce participation of local citizens in decision-making to protect the financial interests of the state and businesses. Why? Please make sure that the housing element is explicit in protecting local participation of citizens in their government. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Moss, to be followed by Mohammed Chakmakchi. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bird, and council members. One aspect of housing in Palo Alto that seems to be overlooked is the hundreds of existing vacant housing units. And let me give you some examples. There are two on ORM, 4025 and 4045, which have been vacant for more than a year. 778 Los Robles has been vacant for more than a year. And there are dozens more in Baron Park I can identify in Ventura. So there are three options we, I think we have for addressing all those vacancies. One of them is count them against our housing mandate. Their housing, we're supposed to be providing housing. The housing is there. It's not being used. Let's count it. Second, some cities in Santa Clara County have already done, fine the property owners who have left these, these properties vacant for more than a year. Let's say a minimum of $250 or $500 a month, and after a year, double it. The third option is we have some surplus in the city's budget. We might be able to buy some of these housing units and do two things with them. Resell them to market rate, or use them as housing for our unhoused people that we are looking for places to put right now. But if we're going to properly look at the housing issues in Palo Alto, we should look at every aspect of it, not just building new ones, but using the ones which have been in existence and basically ignored by their property owners for years. They're there. They're, they're assets. We should use them. Another thing we can do, of course, is to build housing on the upper floors of retail, as an example. It's a nice thought, but it hasn't worked very well. In 1975, when the El Camino Design Guidelines were adopted, we said we put housing in the upper floors of retail. In the 45 years since then, only about a dozen such units have been built. That's inadequate. I think we should do more to build housing on upper floors of retail. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mohammed Chakmakki, to be followed by Amy Ashton. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Mohammed. I am a local teacher. I've been teaching here in the Bay Area for about 17, 18 years, mostly in Palo Alto and in Mountain View Los Altos. And I'm really interested in the work of the council and what you guys are doing in terms of renter protection, first of all. And as someone who's in education, you know, we have a pretty tough job. We, we serve our communities, and we make sure that the kids are learning. And, you know, it doesn't just happen because, like, we have magic fairy dust that we carry around. We, we go, we carry, we work by, by, you know, putting up milestones, metrics, really focusing on when things are actually going to get done. You know, setting dates. Who's going to do it? How's it going to get done? And these are very, very detailed plans that we create in order to make sure that your children get the education they deserve. The state of California has said Palo Alto needs to do some things. And I'm concerned because it just feels really wavy-gravy. Like, I'm not seeing, like, where's the hard data? Like, when is this stuff going to come out? When, what are your decisions? Like, it seems like just very gray and nebulous, and that, that to me is very concerning. I can tell you, in public education, that, that kind of stuff just wouldn't fly. Like, it just wouldn't work. Your kids wouldn't get an education. The other thing I wanted to mention is I'm really, really interested in seeing more housing in this area. Last year, a teacher here, working in Green Middle School, you know, we lost our housing in the middle of the school year. The landlords did not care. And Project Sentinel sadly did not know the law. And I had to find a private, you know, I had to pay for a lawyer to tell their lawyer, oh, you're breaking the law. And then I was able to stay for a few more months, and because of the grace of God and the help of PARA, I was able to find housing. Otherwise, I was looking at living out of my van, which is a really tough thing to do when you're teaching students. And so I really, really hope that you guys take seriously the idea that more housing needs to go up, and it needs to be focused on, you know, or let me back up. A big focus of that should be on protecting the people who are serving your community. And so I just, with that, I thank you. I know you're all doing your best, and you're doing hard work. I do hope that, like I said, that we can get more specific information so that this whole process just, it just, it just doesn't feel very transparent from me. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to be closing public comments. Our next speaker is Amy Ashton, to be followed by Emily Ann Ramos. Welcome.
Honorable city council staff and committee members, I'm very excited to see Palo Alto outline concrete steps toward providing additional much-needed housing. As a professional planner myself, I understand the amount of work, compromise, and late nights involved in getting this draft housing element across the finish line, so we should applaud that. I'm speaking tonight as an individual, but I'm working collaboratively through Palo Alto Forward with a group of local citizens to prepare a comprehensive comment letter on the draft housing element. We all want to see Palo Alto succeed in its lofty and difficult goal to build over 6,000 housing units in eight years. Our group fully supports policies that aggressively promote construction of new housing units, and we will continue to support council and staff as the housing element is implemented and sites are rezoned to accommodate these actual units. As Mohammed just mentioned, that's where the difficult work is actually done and where we need to focus on efforts. Excuse me, focus our efforts. The draft is just the start of making Palo Alto a stronger, more equal, more sustainable community. I'm excited to see this through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Ann Ramos, to be followed by Winter Dellenbach. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Mayor Bird and honorable, honorable council members. My name is Emily Ann Ramos. With Silicon Valley at Home, we plan on submitting a more comprehensive letter. The at Home was proud to be a partner with the city in the partnerships for the Bay's Future Grant for the last two years, where together we undertook significant work on exploring tenant protections that meet the needs of your residents. This work is referenced on page 5-37 or Program 6.6 Fair Housing Section G. We support this section, but we believe that the city should provide a more in-depth timeline for these policies, as the city has already started on building these policy details, thanks to the extraordinary work by the staff and the leadership of this council. You have already done significant work to set up plans and metrics for these policies such as for these policies such as the Tenant Relocation Assistance, which you passed earlier this year, eviction reduction program, the REDS survey, we're going through that through the Policy and Services Committee right now, security deposit limit, fair chance ordinance and the right to counsel. The timeframe given as begin implementation, December twenty twenty-three, does not reflect the work that you have already done. And we believe that you deserve credit for that work. So we ask that you put a more in-depth timeline and the metrics that you have already started gathering for the housing element. We look forward to working with you to take these policies to the finish line. But we thank you for your leadership on tenant protections and believe that you should really take what you have done and then put it into the housing element so you could get proper credit for that. So thank you so much for your time. I look forward to seeing what council does tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Winter Dellenbach to be followed by Penny Elson.
Hi, thank you all for your good work on this. I agree with Hamilton Hitchens. Right into the housing, into this element, the city-owned sites, which is parking lots, should only be used for a hundred percent VMR projects. We just heard tonight from staff that our city consistently meets its market rate housing goals. It's affordable housing that we need. It would be a shame to squander city-owned sites for the housing element on mostly market rate housing. It's nothing new to any of us here that developers say, oh, something won't pencil out. We need to set aside these sites. Groups, nonprofit developers such as Alta Housing and with our increased impact fees going into our Affordable Housing Fund hopefully can build what we actually need in this town, which is affordable housing. And these sites should not be just given to, not given to, but the market rate developers build on this site. And you have to write it in or it's just going to go through our fingers like sand. So please do that and ensure that we're using these sites properly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Penny Elson to be followed by our final speaker, Aram James. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Penny Elson, speaking as an individual. I just want to say, first of all, that I appreciate the, and noticed the city's request of ETA for transit service planning on the San Antonio Road Corridor. I think that will help with the housing that's planned in that area, but it's not enough. And I want to say, I want to add my voice to the earlier speaker who asked for bicycle and pedestrian improvements to the San Antonio Corridor. This is going to be necessary if you're putting housing on the south side of that corridor. Children are going to need to get to school. Families are going to need to get to community services, which are on the other side of the road. And they're not always going to be able to do that with cars. Excuse me. Excuse me. Sorry. This new level of density was not envisioned in any comprehensive plan to date. And so this part of town is extremely ill-equipped to support it. An area plan is absolutely needed. I wonder what will happen with the traffic that is going to be generated by all this housing when grade separation construction occurs. We've had lengthy discussions at the City Council Rail Committee about grade separation traffic studies. We're already, you know, a couple of the options already show that intersections are going to completely fail. I just want to understand if this housing needs to be incorporated in the traffic studies for these major projects that are moving forward in roughly the same time period. So we need to be thinking about what we're doing here more holistically for South Palo Alto. And I guess for the moment, I think those are the three things. Oh, and one last thing is coverly. The city has been not taking action on coverly for a very, very long time. And clearly, there is going to be, if we're adding this level of housing to San Antonio Corridor, there's clearly going to be increased demand for community services. People who live in small spaces need recreational spaces even more than people who live in single-family homes. We are going to need to redevelop coverly in short order. So let's get on it. And that should be part of the area planning process. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Aram James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that you were talking about putting in the language that talked about set aside housing in the general, in the housing plan, but using the word historically disadvantaged. That really bothers me. You remember the award that you spearheaded for Bob Hoover from East Palo Alto, who, the golf program for youth, he's been working there for like twenty-five years and now in his late eighties. He wasn't historically disadvantaged. He told you, he got a master's degree at Stanford in about nineteen sixty-eight and he came over to Palo Alto to try to buy housing here. He's a black man, very accomplished individual. You made sure he had an award. So I think that's the wrong term. These were historically intentionally deprived of housing, redlined out of areas based on their skin color, straight up racism. So I think, Mayor Bird, I know you're on the same page with me on this, but don't be afraid to offend some people by using the real language. This city has promoted segregation. We need to do a certain percentage, I think twenty percent at least of the housing plan, the housing element for African-Americans, another twenty percent for other people of color that have been treated by this city in a despicable fashion, the redlining, the restrictive deeds, all of that. And to use historically disadvantaged, that's just not what it was. It's been intentional, purposeful discrimination, just like this police department in the city of Palo Alto. Same thing. We don't have equality in any of the major services. We've got to come to grips with the racism and you can do it by making this housing element. Also, I believe that the school teachers, and I do think people put in plan. I mean, Greer Stone, look at the amazing thing he does. Two adults, school teachers, he's on the city council and he found time to be on the housing element. He can talk to the metrics that Mohammed might not think went into this discussion. I don't think it's a lack of effort. I just think you folks are not dealing with the reality of racism in this culture. We've got to shift the culture. You can do it by housing people. That's a huge priority. Let's bring back the black population that's been sent out, let's push out of this community. Let's make sure that the cops have to live in Palo Alto and housing here so they're part of the community, service workers, the teachers, all of that sort of stuff. And if we don't have that into that plan, well, God bless us. Thank the Post for putting out that piece on the builder's remedy. That's what we're going to be facing if we don't put this kind of planning into it for equality for all in the housing and forget the market housing, the market rate housing. The Post piece says we did not approve one low-income house this year, permitted for very low-income housing. That we should be ashamed of. Okay, thank you much.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comments and we'll now return to the council for discussion. And I suspect we'll have a fair amount of additional questions and discussion before moving forward to motions. So who would like to go first? Vice Mayor Koo.
Yes, I will. I was noticing in this housing element, there were, there were, I think that we should add into this housing element, the auditor of the state of California, when it issued the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Audit, I think that should be included into Chapter Two when it goes into the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. The other thing is there, in the six-cycle Rena, there were inaccuracies as to a number of housing units needed. In two thousand nineteen, McKenzie and Company threw out the need for three point five million housing units by two thousand twenty-five. They used the wrong housing model. And I think that there is a debate on that where Embarcadero Institute had issued a report analysis about that. And I think that that should be something that should be added in there because it does convey that there has been wrong analysis and also housing figures that were just put out and using wrong models. The other thing that supported the Embarcadero Institute's research paper was Freddie Mac's Research and Perspective paper highlighting that the entire United States housing shortage number to be, to be between two point five million to three point three million. And that is the housing supply shortage. Their paper is called The Housing Supply Shortage: State of the States, Freddie Mac. So I think that is another collaborating document to the Embarcadero Institute's document that should be also added into the housing element. The other document that I think that should be put in there in order to to have all the facts in this report is the Department of Finance's California Population, which has declined by a hundred and seventy-three thousand persons between July one, two thousand twenty and July one, two thousand twenty-one. And that is actually another report. It's E2 California County Population Estimates and the Components of Change by Year. Another report by the Embarcadero Institute is the double counting in the latest Housing Needs Assessment that should be included due to Senate Bill eight twenty-eight. It was also a bill that was co-sponsored by the Bay Area Council and Silicon Valley Leadership Group. All advocates for the tech company and big business. This is all just to raise the count, the numbers for the housing need. And it's inaccurate. So I believe that those are some of the documents that should be added. The other thing I wanted to also add in there is in October twenty twenty-two this year, a study session in San Jose, which shows the cost of residential development in San Jose. So they've actually had a study session, they had a report done. And it shows and confirms that for multi-residential, for, to build a unit, it will cost almost eight hundred thousand in order to do so. So I guess what I'm looking at is where is the money? You know, all of these mandates, including this housing element that the state is forcing or HCD is forcing on to cities, is actually unfunded. And, you know, I hear people talking about public and private partnerships. Yeah, when it comes down to it, in order, in order for affordable housing to be built here in Palo Alto, like Wilton Court, money from the city was put forward. So, you know, not to acknowledge that in this report just does not let HCD or legislators know that it's an impossible task. It's an impossible task to build housing. And developers are not going to want to build below market rate because it doesn't pencil out for them. And even with the market rate, they're not, they're still asking for higher density. Building more, forced upzoning also results in the need for higher levels of services. Everything from police, fire, to park rangers and librarians, everything. And the state is not providing the funding for these incremental costs either. So I think that the city should be looking to make sure that we recruit all that cost and, and make, take legal action to force the state to pony up. Without subsidies, redevelop, and especially since the redevelopment funding in the Great Recession, the state does not have funds needed to fulfill even the Rena Affordable Housing Goals. The six-cycle Rena goal is one million new affordable housing units in the next eight years, a cost of eight hundred thousand each. The total bill will be eight hundred billion. Even with wildly optimistic assumptions, this cost cannot be reduced enough to be realistic. Like I said, where is the money coming from? The governor reports that there was a ninety-seven-plus-billion surplus. Of the state's total three hundred and eight-billion budget, only two point, only two billion has been appropriated for housing investment. And that is one billion for homelessness and one billion is for shelter. Where's the money for housing? But just this week, in the Cal Matters reports, in the summary, that California's projected ninety-seven-point-five-billion budget surplus have failed to materialize. And the state now faces at least a twenty-five-billion deficit. And it will require major adjustments to the budget. So where's the money? And then the governor, by signing SB three thirty, declares a statewide housing crisis and for a five-year period, freezing nearly all development-related fees once a developer submits a preliminary application, including essential project-specific fees. So it freezes fees, it does not allow us to access these fees or even to look at new fees even for affordable housing. So again, you know, where is the money? I also wanted to say in the presentation that we received tonight, one of the programs says to send this plan to the water suppliers. So when it comes down to it, even with water shortages, we're supposed to build even more. And so raising costs for most of the people who need to use the water. I mean, there's, there's flaws in this plan. And not with you guys, you know, not the staff, no. I mean, you guys are all kind of put on a really difficult path by what the state is mandating. So I, I want to submit that I would like to see these reports included into this housing element just so that we have record here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to kind of follow up on some, some of the points that the vice mayor was making. And it's just first, I find it really absurd that most jurisdictions are not receiving certification after their second review. And because of this, my understanding is HCD is even recommending jurisdictions plan for a third review. And that's just insanity to me. I mean, I think the state has created a system where cities are destined to fail. And we're looking at Southern California as an example. They've, sixty-one percent of cities in LA County are out of compliance. It's a sixty-one percent fail rate. As, as a teacher, if I administered a test with a sixty percent fail rate and I expected my students to have to take that test three times in order to pass, that's not a failure on them, that's a failure on me. This is clearly a failure on the state. So I think if the state is serious in addressing housing, as the vice mayor was discussing, they would adequately fund it. California is about to become the fourth-largest economy in the world. What a shocking statistic that is and something I think we can all be proud of. But the fact that out of a three-hundred-and-seven-billion-dollar budget and a hundred-billion-dollar surplus, one billion dollars goes towards affordable housing production. And I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm really grateful for the money that we have received, especially for Project Home Key. I mean, that project, the funding for that project was critical. It's making that project feasible. But just imagine what we could do if we had more. I mean, if I'm starving and you offer me a slice of bread, I'll take it. But if you're sitting there on a king's feast and that's all you offer me is a slice of bread, that's insulting, it's immoral. And that's essentially what the state is doing. They are offering a slice of bread to communities that are dying for affordable housing and they're not giving it to us. You know, where we spend our money reflects our values. Clearly, our state is not seriously attempting to address an affordable housing crisis. And what they're doing is they're placing the blame and the onus on cities to be able to create that affordable housing. Now, do cities share in the responsibility to create housing? Of course. And can Palo Alto do better? Yes, and we must do better. And I'm hopeful that this housing element and a lot of the policies that we're going to be discussing tonight is going to be able to help us address that. Things like rental policies, et cetera. But just as a practical, as a practical matter, Palo Alto cannot create thirty five hundred affordable housing units in the next eight years on our own. And I think as policymakers, we deal with the world as it is, not how we wish it were. And we simply don't have the money to construct the amount of affordable housing that the state is requiring. And if we simply rely on market rate housing, which seems to be the state's kind of disjointed strategy here through, and if we were to do that simply through inclusionary zoning, we would have to construct twenty to twenty two thousand new housing units in the next eight years. That's almost doubling our current housing stock. So would we all be better served if the state acted as a partner in solving the affordable housing crisis? Absolutely. I think rather than continuing to pass just additional unfunded mandates that really do nothing to make housing more affordable. So I think that the state needs to get on board and all of us communities have to recognize what is the true crisis here? Is it a market rate crisis or is it an affordable housing crisis? And as Director Lake pointed out, Palo Alto, we meet our market rate housing numbers every year. I'm sure the state does as well. We have never met our affordable housing targets, nor has, nor has the state. That is where the true crisis is. I mean, I could look around my own apartment complex, there are several vacant, vacant one and two-bedroom apartments. But they haven't been, they haven't been rented out in months. Why? You look at how much they're charging for those units and it is an absurd amount. And so, yeah, I think that's, that's where the real, the real problem is. Of course, market rate production is going to be a tool in getting us there. But I think the, the state is not taking serious the amount of money that's going to be required in order to be able to get us out of there. And we as Palo Alto can't do enough. One real question, sorry, on that, after that rant. I think there's, there's confusion in the community maybe about kind of the policies that are identified in this long report. And if you're just reading the policy, it seems very scarce, it's not fully detailed. Can staff kind of explain sort of what this document is intended to show? And where that detail is? I mean, for example, right under tenant protections on page five thirty seven, lots of concerns in the community, as there should be. This is one of those areas where we have to be able to do better. And it just has a few, you know, it says institute tenant protections prevent anti-displacement, including the following relocation assistance, eviction reduction program, et cetera. And that doesn't give the community much information. Can you maybe kind of talk through the process, how these policies are being developed and will, and will be robust policies when they're actually implemented?
Oh, thank you very much, Councilmember Stone. In regards to the policies, they are policies, so they are typically generally supposed to be a little vague. But with the purpose and intent that these programs will help carry out the policy. So in, in regards to greater clarity or transparency on some of these actions, we can tease out, for example, using the tenant protections. We don't have to put it as one implementing objective or action per se to get more detail, to provide more information to the consumer, if you will. We can tease those out even more and provide a little more description about, for example, what, what is a fair chance ordinance or those type of things? If, if there is this perception that there's, you know, confusion out in the community, we can certainly do that.
Great, thank you. And just kind of a quick follow up to this. Can you just respond to some of the community comments? Because I thought that was a bit concerning to me as well. This idea that a goal of Program six point seven was reach at least twenty households annually through work with human services. That does seem to be a very small number for forty six, forty seven percent of our community being renters.
Councilmember, which, which?
Program six point seven, it's on page five dash thirty eight.
So I see, and it's implementation objective A.
Yep.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. I, if it's not obvious by the way that's written right now, but I think it might be tied to funding that we receive and it, it might be what we've traditionally done with those funds year, year after year. So let us take a look at that and see if we can clarify that.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. And I appreciate the members of the public who brought that up because, yeah, that seems like a very, very small number. Would be great if only that amount required help, but I don't think that is the, the case. So thanks for some of those clarifications and that's all I have for now.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yes. So first of all, thanks to the public speakers, we had some good points there. And again, you know, we've worked on this for nineteen months. There's been a lot of public participation. There's been fifteen meetings of the working group, eight meetings of the ad hoc, multiple community meetings, PTC meetings. And as well as speakers pointed out, it seems like we, we have a thousand-page housing element. And so, I mean, there were a few comments that the process wasn't transparent or detailed enough. I, I think we've done what we could. I think it's been pretty extensive and I do hope people read, read this housing element, at least read the executive summary. And I guess for the council, you know, I think it's really critical that we get this new element in place. It's a final step and it's been a long process. And I think there's probably pieces of this document that we'd all like to change. But I'd suggest we should probably just view this as a work in progress more, more than other parts of our cop plan. This thing tends to morph. I mean, when I think back about how many changes we've made in the last eight years under the previous housing element, you know, we've continued to, you know, add incentives and modify our housing ordinances, you know, in, in ways that I don't think we contemplated eight years ago when we wrote the previous element. So I would just put that out there that we should expect this, this thing will morph over time. And, you know, we should, we should get it in place. In the exact, in the executive summary, you know, it states the goals to meet the housing needs of all Palo Alto residents through two thousand thirty one. And, you know, as Councilmember Q and Stone have kind of pushed on already, you know, we have some really steep challenges to do that. We are a global destination with global demand. And it's really driving very high incomes, which is driving high housing costs. And I want to go back. I appreciated the comments of the PTC Chair at Lowing when he started with really having a duty to look at providing real housing for real people with a quality of life versus kind of this central planning from the state. And, you know, we do need the state government to release funds for homelessness, for affordable housing. But now the council needs to make sure we maintain a balanced city, places for businesses and housing. We need some light industrial, we need retail, we need R and D space, open space. And, and finally, I think we need to protect our right to self-determination as a city under the city charter. And, you know, we need, that's kind of the challenge for the council. You know, in terms of marketing, market factors, I think one of the things that was missed in the summary was really the rise of these mega companies that really have had explosive growth. You know, I'm talking about Apple and Meta and Google, Amazon. There's kind of a passing reference to the internet boom of the nineteen nineties. But, and again, I know it's just a summary, but, you know, it asks staff maybe to go back and take a look. I think the significance of that high-income job growth really can't be overstated. And, you know, I do think if we look at how we're going to fund the solution, we are going to have to tap additional sources. That's likely to be even higher taxes on some of these mega companies. You know, we're also facing real market constraints right now with inflation and mortgage rates. And it seems like the state is not going to, you know, ease up on any of these goals, even though the construction industry may, may not be constructing. So kind of have a question for Molly. I mean, it seems like we may be going to kind of an unprecedented situation where, you know, cities are doing their damnedest to get housing elements approved. And yet, you know, forty to fifty percent of the cities are being rejected. And, you know, and then we've, we've heard about all kind of the legal jeopardy we could be in without having an element. But this seems really like unprecedented, like in the past, it seemed like cities were late, you know, and they didn't file their housing elements, you know, more on purpose. But this seems to be cities trying to comply. I mean, do you have any comments on how you think that's going to play out? Or how some of these penalties would apply when a city is making its, a bad, good, you know, good faith effort?
Right, it, it, it's definitely different this time. So I, I guess I wouldn't necessarily characterize what's going on in Southern California as elements being rejected, but they're being returned with comments and the iterative process is continuing for a longer period than, you know, I think those cities had hoped. And so I, I guess you directed your question to me with the thought that isn't there something that the legal system can offer here in terms of redress? And there's a structure to the, the process that allows for very limited, actually, points for challenges and feedback. And I think the city did a really good job of responding to those structured points. And, you know, we find ourselves where we find ourselves. And obviously, we're not alone. And so I think really it's, at this point, it's about working with the state legislature and looking forward to the next housing element and ways that the process might be refined, arguments that might be made about how that process can evolve for the next cycle.
Appreciate that.
I know it's not very satisfying, it's the best I've got for you tonight.
Yeah, no, again, it just feels like a strange situation when you're looking at potential penalties when you're doing your best to pass that's an element. You know, I, there's another point in the executive summary, I think it's worth mentioning is that, you know, Palo Alto has really long been a leader in affordable housing. We're still number two in the county, Santa Clara County, in terms of affordable housing per capita. And, you know, I was really looking at a lot of the tables about the burden rate. And, and again, we do have very high incomes, very high housing costs with an overall thirty four percent of the households being burdened under the definition of spending thirty percent or more of their income on housing. And again, it's not, not really for tonight, but I think it'd be good to understand how even at the highest income levels, how many people are housing burdened when it, when it, perhaps it's even more of a choice. You know, are people spending more on housing when they have an option to spend less? And I want to flip gears now and go back to think, Molly, you were out of the room when I was asking about the new program that basically says we are agreed to comply with state laws. HCD, I guess, is asking for this kind of program. It's making me uncomfortable because we already have an obligation to comply with state law. And, and my question was, when we were going through a legal process, would they say, well, you also have this other commitment that you, you said you're going to comply with all the laws?
I don't think, I don't, yeah, I don't.
What's the thinking?
Right, so I heard the consultant respond on that. I was actually sitting in the back during that part of the conversation. You know, I think, you know, Palo Alto is pretty rule-abiding. And so when we need to amend our laws to comply with state law, we do that. But I heard her say that that's not the consistent process throughout the state. And I think, you know, these things are not automatically self-executing. So my guess is that the state is looking for all the tools it can get to kind of gain a higher level of compliance, including other jurisdictions that are not as careful to understand their obligations and, and respond to them as we are. I don't, I don't think that it cuts us off from challenging something that we believe violates, say, our home rule authority or is illegal for some other reason.
Okay, well, I, and my colleagues have heard me, I'm curious what they think. It feels like, you know, we're being asked to do something that we already do and, and are expected to do. You know, I think the other thing struck me as I read to this housing element is, you know, we have this new aspect of private employer, player housing with Stanford University restricting usage to large number of units to its own employees. And, you know, I think, I think we should move forward with this element, but it's something we may want to think about. I really want that to continue. How would we feel if it was Google-only housing or Facebook-only housing as part of our housing element? And then the last comment I have right now is that I do support the idea that the city property should be used for below-market-rate housing. And if we're not doing that, I, I really think we should change and do that going forward in terms of these RFPs. Thanks.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wade in. First question, throughout the report, we, especially in the AFFH section, there's a lot of references to the twenty sixteen through two thousand twenty. I forget what the, the survey that's done, let's see, the ACS, yes. But I didn't see a reference to the, the current census data. Is there a reason that they use that survey, which is less contemporary than perhaps the census data is?
I'll defer to our consultant, to Brenna, to respond to that question.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and, and look as to why that is. It was likely just when we prepared the documentation that not all of the census data was available. We made a number of updates late in the process to incorporate the latest census data that was available, but that may just be one spot where it did not get changed.
Well, I think it's more than one spot that it, I, I saw numerous spots where it looked like it wasn't updated where the census data is more contemporary. So.
It's definitely something that we can look at to see if the avail, the data is available for those portions. But with my recollection, we, the data that was most readily and easily available at the time that those sections were prepared is what is used and referenced. If the, like I mentioned, if the data wasn't available at the time those sections were prepared, we go through a, a process where we prepare the sections, they get reviewed, we make edits. So it may just have been that those sections were prepared earlier than others. But it's definitely something that we can take a look at and make sure, we make sure that the the most up-to-date information is included before the drafts.
I don't know when they were prepared, but the census data I'm familiar with that stood out to me has been available throughout this year. So I'll leave it at that. And then I, I did want to note that in the introductory section, it was great that there was added a some listing on Palo Alto's, not only past historic, historic affordable housing record, but our current pipeline, but it, it referenced several affordable housing projects and for instance, but it, it omitted. for instance, but it omitted others in the pipeline. So I don't see the, there's no reference to the Wilton Court project. Yeah, none that I can see on the Wilton Court project that is just opening. I don't see anything on the five twenty-five Charleston project. That's fifty units and each of those actually have relevance for the AFFH programs in part because they preferentially served developmentally disadvantaged adults. And that's a population that needs particular care. It doesn't reference the Grant Avenue Teacher Housing Project, one hundred and ten units. We had teachers speak tonight and, you know, we, not everybody's aware of these things and being left off there. And even on the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park, it said it preserved mobile home units, but it did more than that. It went from units that were market rate, non-deed restricted, but affordable to deed restricted affordable projects. And that's an important difference. Next, I wanted to touch base on what we talked about earlier on, all of the requirements that staff's going to have to update the comprehensive plan this coming year, numerous zoning changes, which each of them have to go through significant process. And then our multiple coordinated area plans that we'd be beginning and have on the horizon. And I know from over the past two years or so that having adequate staff capacity to do a number of the things that we wanted to do to do really good planning that looks at how we not only add housing, but we build communities and services that support those new residents. I don't understand where we have staff capacity to accomplish all this. So is that an additional need that we need to recognize?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for flagging that. And we'll acknowledge that that does keep me up a little bit at night as we go to implementation of the housing element. When I consider all of the council priorities that we have for our long-range planning group, which is currently fully staffed and having to make choices about which items that we advance. Right now, renter protections is receiving our focus, but I think there's more that we, there would like to be more movement on that and we share that interest. So I will, we have an upcoming budget cycle and I'll be in coordination, talking with the city manager's office and our staff to understand what our staffing needs as we look to the future toward implementation of these, of these programs. And whether it's a combination of consultant dollars or needing to bring folks on board, we'll certainly want to consider that in context to some of the, you know, hiring challenges that I think the council is more than familiar with and see what's the best option. So thank you for identifying that.
Well, as long as we're on budgetary matters as they relate to this topic, on C fourteen, page fourteen and fifteen, we have local trends in fair housing enforcement and outreach. And in the opening paragraph on top of page C fourteen, we talk about that Palo Alto is served by the Legal Aid Society of Santa Clara. The city is providing references thirty-seven thousand plus in FY twenty-one of CDBG dollars to Project Sentinel to resolve fair housing complaints via investigation, mediation, education, and outreach. So that thirty-seven thousand that I see elsewhere, on the following page, it says the anticipated impact of these outreach efforts is fifteen individuals. Is that the same number of individuals that, is that the number of individuals that are served by that funding?
Yeah. So Tim and I think these are numbers from the annual action plan that we submit, but we'll have to crosswalk that to see if that dollar is those fifteen individuals.
Okay. And either way, it goes to the question of if we're really going to be committed to this AFFH program, do we have the resources to support the needs of these members of our community? Whether they are renters who are receiving improper or unjust or illegal actions by landlords or whether there are other people with disabilities or other needs. It just seems like we have far too few dollars to actually live up to our, the commitments that we're making here. And so without seeking an explicit answer to that, I'd like to put that on the table that in our budgetary process, we need to reexamine our funding there. In the grand scheme of the budget, this is a pretty small dollar amount. In terms of providing the services that are needed to protect renters and low-income residents, it's an important allocation. And I've certainly heard anecdotally that the current resources just aren't adequate. And so if we're going to put this in writing and talk the talk, we need to have the resources to walk the walk. Okay. And then I also have become more aware recently of, and it's referenced in this report. Let's see, I forget which page, but non-income eligible disabled residents. And when they run up against housing issues that are violating state and federal law, I should say, on accommodating disabilities, how do we really assure that we are able to adequately address those needs?
So we do not have a local, you know, multifamily or housing sort of code enforcement program to investigate those initiatives. When it comes to ADA compliance, there is a federal office, and I don't have the contact information, but perhaps we can communicate it through our channels where individuals who are aggrieved by, you know, housing accommodations that don't take into consideration their disability needs, there is a process by which the fed, federal government can pursue investigation into those cases.
Yeah, that's a pretty involved process for someone to seek redress. And I know that we've discussed recent issues at Casa Real that has had multiple occurrences of elevators going out and disabled people having real serious problems as a result. And so I just, as part of this program, I'd like to us look at how we can strengthen obligations of landlords to comply with city regulations as they apply to disabilities. And so I'll just put that out there as a future consideration. And then just a couple of comments. Vice Mayor Koo had referenced really a number of these studies that have really disagreed fundamentally with the basic premise of the RENA allocations. And initially, it was this McKinsey study that asserted three and a half million shortage of housing units in California that the governor had repeated and many housing advocates had taken as gospel for a number of years and said that that needed to be the basis for the housing supply. It didn't make any sense. If you look at the number of housing units in the state, it meant we were something like close to twenty percent fewer housing units than the current demand was there for. So in any event, we've now seen a number of very credible studies, including Freddie Mac and most recently a study by the leading, a leading national housing and affordable housing advocacy group Up For Growth that said that the nationwide shortage was three point eight million and California's was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And the reason why that matters so much is that the RENA numbers, my understanding is HCD is actually now using a two point five million shortage, but it's a little opaque on how they're coming up with their statewide shortage numbers that then get assigned to regions and the regions then assign them to cities. But we're talking about numbers that very credible resources that our housing advocates are asserting are perhaps two point five times higher than the reality. And I appreciate that that is not something that's within our purview to change, but I want to really say that we have housing problems and in terms of low and moderate income housing, we have housing crises in our state, our region, and even in our city. But the state allocating a artificial and incorrect goal doesn't help matters, except if the objective is to remove local decision-making and local democracy from addressing those problems. It's the only way to me that it really makes sense as to why they would be embracing numbers that are being refuted by highly reliable sources. So that, having said that, I'll move on. Two last points that brought up before is that under these RENA allocations, all cities are assigned housing units and all housing sizes are treated equally. So studios are a housing unit, three-bedroom townhomes are a housing unit. Cities are thereby, they're struggling to meet their housing mandates. And so they're incentivized to approve small, multiple housing units, studios and one-bedrooms over families, three-bedrooms, two- and three-bedroom units. And the market in many cases is favoring those same small units. And at the same time, the state has recognized what we're experiencing locally is a rapid decline in school age populations. And the state is saying, we have a crisis. How do, how do we deal with it? And my answer would be look in the mirror, because the way that this, the allocations are set up are incentivizing anti-family housing. And what we should instead be doing is some formula that is bedroom-based and have some balance of types of housing units that are being mandated. And right now, we're all being incentivized to build massive numbers of studio apartments. And I think that's destructive to the social and the economic diversity that we all value. And then similarly, we have under the way in which we define or the way in which the state defines of different affordable housing categories based upon the county mean incomes. It looks at the size of the household and then it looks at the number of bedrooms. And so just like we saw on, what's the, Via Locale, what's it called? Alta Locale, they came forward with a whole bunch of very small studios. And they were able to say that that the price that they would be assigning or asking on their moderate income units fell under that hundred and twenty AMI category. And then lo and behold, they were fifty dollars less than the market rate units. Except now they've dropped the price in the market rate units, so I'm not even sure that they're actually less than the market rate units. And the reason that is, is because if they were larger units, instead of thirty-five hundred dollars, they'd be charging forty-five hundred dollars and they wouldn't qualify as a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Because they shrink the size, they qualify under an AMI category. So what we have is a system that incentivizes shrinking the size of units in order to qualify under different income categories. And that's, that's a real problem going forward. So I just want to put that on the table. It's not something any of us can resolve, but when we're talking about our broader housing issues and how we reconcile meeting the state mandates with trying to have balances of housing types to have our affordable units actually be livable units and not micro units, just because people are lower income. The ways in which the state has set up these rules are working against these values. And how we end up correcting that is, remains to be seen, but I wanted to put that out there as part of our broader housing discussion. And I'm not seeing any other lights, so maybe we're getting ready to move forward to motions. Vice Mayor Koo.
Actually, I don't have a motion, but I just wanted to add that with these bills, with these widely inflated RENA mandates, which requires cities to change the zoning to allow bigger and taller projects on the lots, this is all upzoning. And so by creating a bigger development envelope, upzoning allows more apartments to be built, raising the economic value of the upzone lot. Upzoning also creates windfalls, windfall increases in property values, especially for undeveloped commercial and multifamily residential lots, making the cost of housing more expensive. And it certainly does not trickle down. So with all of this building, if this government or HCD or, you know, these legislators thinking that all of this upzoning is going to create more affordable housing, it is not. And with our, with the way, there's also the job multiplier where employers and workers come into a city, they bring in a number of people who help out, who work here in the city in order to serve that group of people, specifically in the past, a lot of the tech workers. And so for these people to have to drive so far to get over here, you know, this government is not doing the right. The state legislation is not doing the right thing in order to ensure that people can live close to their communities where they work. So again, you know, it is just a setup to fail. The other thing I wanted to also say is that with SB eight twenty-eight, what it also allows for is that, actually, it's SB thirty-five, also allows the developers, once they're entitled to get the property, they allow the developers, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't give the city the number of units that we have actually entitled or approved the application for. Developers, it doesn't, the developers will have to pull the building permit in order to allow for those numbers. And oftentimes the developers don't do it. I mean, we have an example here where, when I first joined council, I think that building used to be Mike Spikes over on El Camino. Mike Spikes over on El Camino, on the southern part of Palo Alto, past Page Mill. We entitled them, approved their permit, and they never built the housing. You know, I know, I know that there's other housing going in right now, but it's been many years and that could be accounted towards our RENA numbers back then. So there is definitely a lot of holes that does not help the city. And I think that that's something that should also, also be included, that perhaps they should look at changing that, because at the end of the day, city doesn't build these units. We approve the permits or the entitlements to it. So I am done. Thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thanks. So I, you know, I'm not going to add too much here. I think, you know, where we are tonight, I think, first of all, most of the heavy lifting on this is done, right? I think we're working through the latter stages of the process here. So I think, you know, there's, there's things in here we all like, there's things in here that, you know, boy, we wish this could be different, but you know, but at this point, I think we're, we're working toward a rather draconian deadline, you know? I think, you know, basically, we're in a position that theoretically, if HCD doesn't decide they don't want to approve our, our application on the first round, you know, we might have, you know, I think Santa Monica's got, what, 20 builders remedied applications going on right now or something like that? And that could be us on February 1st, right? So I think, I think we need to move forward. I think this is good enough to get us where we need to go, right? Although I think staff's direction on flushing out a few, a few last areas, I think is useful, and I think we should proceed with that, right? And then, as somebody pointed out earlier, you know, this is going to continue to evolve and as, you know, as we map stuff to it, you know, it's going to give us a direction, but it doesn't necessarily constrain every single project that, that happens over the next eight years. I did want to ask a question. Somebody brought up about the, the issue of affordable housing on city, on city parking lots, which is city land. So, you know, my inclination, I recall when we discussed this, we said, this is public land, okay? We, you know, we have a duty to be good stewards of public land, right? And we said, well, okay, affordable housing is arguably a public good, right? But, you know, other kinds of land uses, yeah, no, maybe not so much, right? And so, as somebody else pointed out, you know, you know, I think we're going to hit the market rate target, okay, on this. I actually think, I actually think we've got a very good chance of doing that. I, I didn't think so before the housing element process started, okay? But I think, I think our chances of hitting the market rate target are pretty good. I think we're going to really struggle with the affordable housing, the below market, you know, without sort of lots and lots and lots of money, as, as other people have pointed out, which doesn't seem to be forthcoming from the state. So, you know, my inclination is that if we are going to, you know, give up public land or commit public land to, you know, specific uses, because then it's sort of not changeable for the next century, right? You know, we ought to reserve that for, for 100% affordable housing, I think. I'm not sure we need to for market rate housing. And furthermore, if you look at all of these state mandates, you know, down in the fine print, it says, well, you can have, they got to be at least, at least two-thirds housing, but you can have a third commercial too. And I certainly don't want to give up public land for office space, for example, right? So I guess my question to staff is that, you know, the, the language in 1.4 isn't specific that, to 100% affordable housing. And the question is, should it be, right? You know, you know, on the one hand, if we put that, is HCD going to look at this and say, oh, that's another constraint or something like that? And, you know, and obviously, we can't constrain future councils. I mean, the next council could come along and say, you know, we really think it makes sense to put an office building on, on the parking lot, right? On a public parking lot. But, you know, maybe we should sort of be trying to communicate our intent, if that makes sense. So what's, a very long-winded question, what's staff's reaction to the idea of adding 100% to the line about, in 1.4 about, and that's on page?
Yeah, I think it's 510.
Page 510.
So I think Hamilton, Huchin's had spoken to this, and this is an area where the Housing Element Working Group spent a lot of time, and I think their intent was that it be 100% affordable, as you're articulating it now.
That's my recollection, too.
The, the reason it's drafted this way is just to provide flexibility, knowing that, you know, if the city's providing the land, that is good, and that takes a lot of the pressure, a big constraint to a housing provider, if we have a favorable lease term on the long-term use of that property. And so, it's a policy question for the council. The reason it's in there is just in case we needed to add a little bit more incentive to a, a for-profit housing developer to build there. A low-income, a nonprofit home builder probably wouldn't do market rate, because they're, they're probably wouldn't be eligible for the low-income tax credits.
Right. I mean, I think all of our intent was, you know, this would be, we'd be talking about another project like Wilton Court, right? Or 525 Charleston, or 231 Grant, or something like that, right?
So that's, so the, I guess the answer is, if that's the, the council's interest, then, you know, that, you can send us that direction. Just before we move off that, I just want to give our consultant a chance to weigh in if there is more beyond a policy consideration, if there was something from HCD.
That would, that would be helpful.
But any insight on that?
Yeah, I, I don't think so. I mean, I, I agree with you, what you said earlier. We crafted this to allow for some flexibility, but it was the working group's intention, as you stated. So yeah, I don't have anything else, I think, to add on top of what you already said.
So, so I'd be, I'd be inclined to support the working groups, delineating the working group's attention here. And again, you know, this doesn't constrain a future council from doing something different, right? I mean, we can't do that, and they, they could come back and say, no, we want to go a different direction, right? But it's just that, you know, after 7.99 years of doing this and having seen a bunch of projects, you know, it just seems like we get into these discussions with, you know, sort of parties on the opposite side, and we say, okay, you know, this, this piece is ours and this piece is yours. And then, it just seems like they always come back and say, well, how about a little more of yours for us, right? And then we deliberate and we agonize and we say, well, how about, you know, we split the difference? And they say, okay. And then they come back later and they say, well, how about just a little bit more and so forth? And I, I think maybe we're better off being clear about this. So I would, I would support adding the word 100% in between requires and affordable on item A on page 510. And I don't know if you need a motion for that or not.
Yes, we would.
I move that we add the word 100% in between, the line, the line on.
Why don't we wait when we get a motion, Bill?
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember DeBois.
I was going to make a motion if Councilmember Phil Seth wasn't, but, so I would move, make staff motion with the amendment that we just talked about to Program 1.4. Okay, and we get the language for the amendment, or we could just say, Program 1.4 is for 100% affordable housing projects.
Okay. Did you want to speak to your motion?
No, I mean, about just a minute, I guess. Like I said, in the first two rounds, again, I, I think this really represents a lot of work by a lot of people. I think it's a pretty good housing element. I think our last couple of housing elements have won awards. I hope we win an award for this one. And hopefully, we get it passed early next year.
Thank you. And so I would, speaking to the motion, I'd like to offer two amendments. The first is to, and Director Lee, you can help me on how to frame this, but it's to direct staff to bring forward zoning changes that would remove the conditional use permit for housing in the Stanford Research Park where housing is a compatible use.
Yeah, and I think, Mayor, we would want to put that under Program 1.5 and add an implementation objective, maybe letter F, to do what you just said, which is to allow to remove the CUP requirement for housing in the research park where, where appropriate. And what I mean by that is not adjacent to hazardous areas or where it would conflict with our, our local ordinance on that already.
Good. Is that one acceptable to the maker?
Yes.
And then secondly, and I, again, am looking for assistance from the staff on how to frame this, but to capture the issue I raised earlier about pursuing affordable housing preferences for historically disadvantaged populations. And I'll take any advice on how to word that.
Can I ask for a question? Well, so, I mean, staff said that they're going to work on some additional objectives. I guess we really haven't heard what, what they were had in mind, right?
So, Mayor, I can speak to that. So, so Attachment, Attachment A shows the four programs that we highlighted in the presentation. And it speaks generally to the other types of what we'll call non-substantive changes that we would anticipate making. But we're asking the council to give us some discretion or leeway to make changes to the document that you're reviewing tonight in response to additional public comments that may come in. And in our sort of last-ditch effort to review the comments from other jurisdictions to minimize, to the extent feasible, the number of comments that we're going to get from HCD. And so that's, that's, that's how we would approach that.
But specifically to AFFH, which the mayor's proposing amendment here, what kind of, that, separate from the programs you already mentioned, you said you would implement additional objectives for AFFH. So does this fall in line with that, or did you have other things in mind?
So, so I don't have a, a precise response to your question, because we're still vetting that out. The, but I will say, this, this proposed implementation objective that the mayor has, has articulated, that's a policy change that is what we would call substantive. You wouldn't want us to make that unilaterally on our own. So if you want that specific provision, we would encourage that to be included in the motion, because our, our edits are going to be more to comply with HCD's expectations of how does an AFFH chapter in a housing element comport with state law? This, this goes beyond what is required of us for the housing element.
Can I, can I add that, you know, we have, we and really society more broadly have struggled with not only how we move forward as a society and, and in our housing as a major part of that in ways that are inclusive and truly non-discriminatory, but it's a much greater challenge on how we act to redress past discriminations. And I think this is one of the ways that we could do so that would be meaningful. And I think it would be a real step in the right direction for us to do this, to the extent permissible by law.
Well, I think, and Molly can certainly speak to any legal permissibility questions from an implementation perspective. I think that, you know, quite frankly, this leaves a lot of room for interpretation.
Well, and, and, and I will say, it's not intended to be narrowly prescriptive. And that's, that this would need to be flushed out.
Understanding that, I will invoke the phrase, "the devil is in the details," because I suspect it really is in this case. And, and so, this could be a small undertaking or a humongous undertaking. And it's within that range of interpretation that I think staff needs some clarity as to what you have in mind and ultimately that the council has in mind for what this would be in order to allow us to do this in a manner that keeps it from being somewhat unachievable.
So my assumption is that this would need to come back for deeper discussion and that this would be a policy direction. There's no way that we're going to be able to answer those questions that you have tonight.
Yeah.
And can we, can we word this in a way, again, that would let us complete the housing I don't know if there's a way we can word this, which is a little more flexible. I mean, I, I kind of had that same concern that Ed just mentioned, which it could be in a really wide range of things. And it's, I don't think we want to hold up the whole housing element to go deep on this right now.
Nope. And that's part of why I was asking staff for any recommendations on the wording. At the same time, I don't want to lose the opportunity to begin to move forward on this and at least set it as a policy direction while we then have to work through what would be programmatic elements to it.
Yeah. So again, the typical, ask staff to explore affordable housing preferences. And then...
So does that language, I'm not seeing much from staff in terms of recommended language, but...
Well, if I might, Mayor, just a little sidebar here, that, and again, this is a bit of a spontaneous reaction. Typically, in order to address an issue that has been phrased as, as has been, would require some form of disparity study that would identify and quantify differential, this, this, and define, basically, what is historically disadvantaged mean? And how would that then be measured, not only in terms of what the disadvantage was, but then what is the, the level of, or method of compensating for that?
And, and including in that is what, how we, how we differentiate where those past practices are having remnants today and where they may not. These are complicated issues. So the intention here is to begin this process of developing what a program like this might look like, to research what other cities and jurisdictions have done amongst those few that perhaps have done this, and begin this process. So that's the intention. And I'm open to staff recommendations on language that, recognizing that it is not the intention tonight to attempt to prescribe or determine the answers to a set of questions that will be relevant here, but to move forward in terms of saying, this is a program that we wish to develop, and it won't be simple.
So let me ask Mr. Lee to perhaps make a suggestion here with the context for our little huddle here being a suggestion of, perhaps articulate the next step as opposed to necessarily the outline of a program itself. So go ahead, John.
Yes. If we, if we did a program, if, if Yes, if we did a program, if we, I think it's important to distinguish a program, the effort itself, which is a years-long effort, from the, what I heard you explain a moment ago, which is research, find out what other people have done to address this issue, come back, share what you've learned, and begin to sketch out some options on how we might go forward. If we did that, that is a more discreet action that presumably we would get council direction on, you know, with understanding the scope and time and effort thereof. If we do it as I just described, we can put that in as an implementing objective as opposed to a brand-new program. And maybe we put it under Program 6.6 for housing. Maybe, you know, we'll figure out where best to slide that in. The other thing I wanted to just flag is on the timeline, because this is not a requirement for RENA, you know, compliance, it's not a requirement for housing element. The timeline will follow after we get all those mandated code changes that we need to change. So we need to slot it in at an appropriate time.
And I would suggest that there could be some overlap where we begin to have initial discussions without being able to move forward on a flushed-out program. But we don't necessarily wait sequentially for all those other things to be implemented before we start putting some meat on the bone on this. And maybe this is a referral, you know, that we, what's the role of HRC in this? What's the role of the Planning and Transportation Commission? So whenever we would have a first substantive discussion at the council on this, that's when we could figure out kind of a little more guidance with an understanding that this will take time.
Okay, so clerk, if we could add language to see that says add an implementation objective to Program 6, just leave it at 6 for now, and to study and research what other jurisdictions have done to provide affordable housing preferences for historically disadvantaged populations.
And would that be instead of this initial clause? Great, okay.
And report back to the city council.
Okay.
At the end, and then we'll fine-tune the language as we get that ready for publication. But again, if we're, I just want to check in with our consultant to, Brenna, if you're, if you have any input on this, let her see on the screen.
Not right now, but we should just talk a little bit more to Veronica as she's, Veronica Tam is assisting us with the program development. So we should talk to her a little bit more, Jonathan. She'll know if, what else has, maybe something similar has been done elsewhere that she'll have better language for.
Great, and so for the council, this is to guide us, and we will work on getting some more language that tightens it up a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
So I think with those changes, I'll go ahead and accept that.
Okay, Vice Mayor Koo.
On A, adding in the word 100% is good, but as you know, affordable is also defined by the city up to 120%, and now the state has actually gone to 150% AMI. So is the intent to leave it open so that should a project come in looking at doing 150% AMI, 100% affordable, is it, that's almost market rate? So what that is market rate? And is that the intent to leave it at that without prescribing a range of truly affordable to such-and-such AMI?
So our local ordinance defines what affordable housing is, and it's at 120% area median income. And the city is going to be involved in the process of, if we get interest from a nonprofit home builder, we may want to articulate the number of bedrooms. And I think when you get to these, the bedroom sizes of the units, and I think as your units get larger, the 120% AMI number is more consequential to the tenant than it may be if it's a studio for the reasons that have been articulated this evening. So the city is going to have a role in the unit and mix, bedroom mix of any development that would come forward. So I guess, again, I think if you wanted to just provide the most flexibility from an affordable housing standpoint, you could say 120%. I do think that most nonprofit home builders are probably going to come in under that because just for the tax, you know, the financing to support the construction of the project. But you may get a market rate builder who could build at 120% AMI. That might be possible, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's where my concern is, you know, that anytime somebody comes in, a developer says that, oh, you know, we need to hire AMI because we're not going to pencil out or it doesn't work out for us. I think on this one here, we, the city and the council, needs to kind of really hone in on this public property that it does benefit those that are most in need and that we're able to hit those numbers for the low and the low-low folks. So I would just feel much more comfortable if it's designated for a certain, like 80% and below, or even 100% and below, but definitely not leaving it open for above 100% and above.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think A, the small A, again, we got a lot of As tonight. The second A on this screen is capped, as I read it, at 100% affordable housing, up to 100%.
I thought the 100% was the entire project.
You're right, so that would include 120% AMI. And what you're saying is you'd like to see it capped at 80% AMI.
80% or below.
Okay, so that's a, we can do whatever the council wants to see on that.
With the maker and the secondar comment and accept.
And as you're doing that, I'll just note, I think we have this, it was mentioned tonight, there's an active RFI out for, to solicit feedback from people on development on this. So just, there may be a shift in that effort as well, if this change goes forward.
I would just note that, given that process underway, and essentially how we're now defining the type of proposals we're seeking, we will not attract market rate developers. This will be purely affordable developers that will express interest in working on these projects. And I would, I think, be willing to venture that the discussion of affordability will be something that the council, the city and the council specifically, will be able to define as you get further down the road.
So how was the RFI put out? What was, what was requested?
We actually do not have the specific status of that at this moment, so cannot report to you on that.
But it was no affordability mentioned?
So again, we don't, I may have misspoke earlier. We don't actually know if the RFI has gone out. If, I know that we've been working on revisions of that. I don't believe it had stipulated a, I think it had the opportunity for somebody to propose a mixed affordable and market rate option. But if this motion goes forward, we will obviously need to pivot on that and update it so that it's really geared toward affordable housing, nonprofit home builders, which is fine, we could do that if that's the council's interest. And again, I just think, again, council's call, we define affordable housing as 120% AMI. So, and just to echo what City Banter said, this city council is going to have the option to accept a proposal, to approve the proposal. So you've got many points in the process to set the direction and be able to approve the project.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that, you know, when the project comes forward, that we can decide whether to move forward or not. At the same time, with this very clearly that we're seeking deep affordability, you know, 80% and below, that the folks that are going to respond to the RFI are not going to expect that they can do more, they're going to get 120 or more. So I would feel a lot more comfortable if we're really concise with our messaging and with our direction. So I would feel much more comfortable with that. And I'd love for comments from the maker and the secondar.
One more question for John. Would it be different to say 100% BMR housing versus 80%?
That would allow up to 120% AMI.
Still?
Oh, I thought below market rate was below 100.
Below market rate is our overall program that implements the affordability restrictions up to and including 120% AMI.
Okay, I thought we were using affordable for 120, but below market rate was below AMI. Maybe I misunderstood. I mean, I, again, I feel like land cost is such a big part of below-market-rate housing. I would be open to the 80%. So I would accept the change.
Well, the secondar, thank you.
Yes, I'll accept that.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no further comments. No, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so first of all, I just wanted to thank everyone for you guys' work on this. I know I've been through this myself several times, both on council and on the planning commission, so it's a ton of work. Appreciate everyone's input on this. I agree that, you know, we want to make sure that we retain our zoning rights, and so I think getting something out is important. So I agree on that. I think overall with staff to hear is largely right. I can't agree with big letter A, I can agree with B. I think the main issue I have is that, and I said this before, but I think that idea of 100% affordable housing is very noble. I think it's something which is kind of like cherry pie and, you know, all that good stuff in life. But the reality is, we have to ask ourselves, who builds this housing? And how does it get built? And how does it get funded? And my main challenge with 100% affordable housing, while it sounds really good, the main challenge I have with it is that you're expecting developers to lose money to build something. And I just don't think that's realistic. Somebody say, well, look, we'll just get the state to fund it. The state, I think, this coming year is actually projected to have a $25 billion or $30 billion deficit. I don't know if you guys know, but 3,000 people in California pay something like 75% of the state revenue, and those people are starting to move out. So I think, I think this is something where if we really do want to solve the housing crisis, I think that, that mandating, I think staff is right. I think what staff said earlier was correct. I think we want to have that flexibility so that, you know, maybe some that's closer to this, but not exactly, can be built. Because this is what puts money into our affordable housing fund. This is what actually allows things to be built and more BMR units to be created. So I think this is a very noble idea. I just think it's practically not possible. So I want to ask that we split the motion between big A and B. Thank you.
You want just B under A split out? I'll just briefly speak to that. I'm surprised that there's a question as to how this would be built. This would be by nonprofit affordable housing developers in all likelihood, like the vast majority of our affordable housing. The difference is that in this case, they hopefully will have a significant land discount. And there's still a parking issue and replacing the existing parking. But we have the charities housing project for 120-plus units that is coming forward where they had to purchase that land, similarly on the Wilton Court site and most of our affordable housing projects, where they have to outright purchase the land, which is a huge hurdle. But in general, once they have the land, they can bring together the various funding sources from regional, state, federal, and philanthropic resources to build these projects. So that's my answer to Councilmember Tanaka's question.
Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time, I would like to make a comment as well.
Sorry?
At the appropriate time, I wanted to make an additional comment.
Okay, but let's see, we're, that's A, B, where we want to break out small letter B, under A, is a, to be voted on separately. And go ahead, Mr. Chicago.
Clerk did it right the first time.
Pardon me?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Two things, one, did confirm that the RFI is not out, so we do not need to revise anything. We will simply take whatever direction the council or specification that the council approves and bake it into that request for letters of interest. The second point, maybe a little more difficult because this is a bit of a stretch, but I did want to call to the council's attention the question of workforce housing. We haven't really had a specific discussion, but there certainly has, have been a number of inquiries there. If the concept for this use of the city-owned lots were to include an interest in workforce housing, specifically city workforce housing, I am, again, stretching here, but I believe the 80% AMI may exclude a large portion of our workforce. So if that were, again, city workforce were a part of the goal here, I want to bring it to your attention that it is likely that that threshold would exclude much of the city workforce.
All right, so let's, when we go back to the main motion, let's see if we want to consider implications of that. So just on, we're now just speaking to this, what we've broken off as B there, is that right? Let's see. We were trying to separate small letter B?
All I'm trying to do is, just basically, I personally like the staff's original recommendation. I think it's the correct one. And so B is an altered one, and so that's why I say split it. So I'm not asking that we make an amendment here or we have a separate motion. It's just literally to split the motion, that's it.
I'm sorry, and maybe I misspoke. So which one did you want to peel off?
The one that the clerk has done right now.
Pardon? Direct staff? Sorry?
The clerk's already done it. Splitting A and B, that's it.
You wanted all of A split off, you're saying? You wanted all of A split off, you're saying?
Just splitting A, large letter A and B. That's it.
You want to vote on large letter A separately?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. So then, in that case, then we, I thought you were just talking about small letter B. In that case, we can then, under the city manager's, the issue that the city manager raised, I guess I'd like to suggest we consider adding language capped at after the comma, or for city workforce housing for city employees. Does that open it up well enough? And
again, acknowledging that we don't have the math behind that right now, but I think it certainly captures that goal. Should that be the council's interest?
Okay, so the maker of the motion, accept that? And I don't know the sequence because it was Vice Mayor Koo who really asked for the, this change. And so I can ask consent from both of them.
Yes, Councilmember Koo is this?
Yes, yes.
So generally, I would say, I think, I think public land should be used for affordable housing. Not generally workforce, but I guess I would accept this for city employees.
Okay, okay. All right, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, I just wanted to speak briefly to the, to the big A, small A split here. I think, I think there's actually two really distinctly different worldviews here. And which one you have sort of gives guidance to which way you're going to vote on this. In one worldview, you know, basically, regulation is the problem. And if we deregulate everything, then the private sector will produce a good society for us. The other view is that actually, society needs to be paid for. And it's really government that needs to decide our job, who pays for society? Because we can't really lay that on the private sector. I mean, their job is to return, returns to their shareholders. It's really our job. And then, so depending on which of those two worldviews you have, sort of gives guidance on how you're going to vote on item A here. Thanks.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm willing to accept A, little A, the workforce housing inclusion, if we also include, if we also include teachers in that. Because they're not technically city employees, but they also serve our community and would meet that same issue of not being qualified for 80% AMI. Probably make more than that, but don't traditionally qualify for other affordable housing. Sort of the maker and the secondor would be willing to include teachers into that, or for workforce housing for city employees and teachers.
I would be willing to accept that. Councilmember DeBois?
Do you want teachers or PAUSD employees?
I don't, I don't know if we want to be as prescriptive as that at the moment.
I'd prefer, again, I don't think, I don't, I don't really want to accept that one. I think, I think, again, we should be using public land for below-market-rate housing. But again, because this was a city lot, I think the city employees made sense.
Offer it as a, as an unfriendly then?
I will second that.
Great, thank you. I think, I think the logic is the same here. If we're trying to encourage city employees being able to live in the same community that they serve, I think we should extend that to teachers. And we continue to see an exodus of good teachers out of the, out of the region because they can't afford housing. My wife and I struggle with this all the time. We've heard public commentators today, and we've heard them in the past on the importance for this. It seems like a golden opportunity to be able to provide some of that housing. I don't see how this isn't logically connected to same thing for workforce housing for city employees.
And I would just add that what we've, what we have here is that a focus on low-income affordable housing and then including low-income and missing middle workforce housing for city employees and teachers. And we're not, we're not talking about really high-income people in either of those cases. So I think it's, it addresses both the focus on true low income and an additional focus on critical employees in the public sector. Okay, let me clear this. Does anybody else want to speak to?
I have my hand up on this.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so again, I'm not anti-teacher, but PAUSD has, has been banking land for some time. They didn't want to participate in the counter teacher, teacher housing project. So, again, our city land is quite limited. So, you know, if PAUSD doesn't want to support these programs, again, I'm concerned about using our very limited city land for this specific purpose. And making it teachers generally, you know, there are a lot of private schools in the area. It, it just seems like we've gotten far, far away from using these limited, there are six city parking lots. We need to get that very low affordable housing. And, you know, I was willing to add city employees, but I think we're just going far afield of where I thought this program would be. So I can't support this.
Councilmember Phil Seth. Okay, Vice Mayor Koo.
If it's PAUSD teachers, would you consider adding that in? I think.
I'd be fine restricting it. If we want to restrict it down to PAUSD, maybe open it up to just PAUSD employees. There are a lot of instructional assistants and others who work within the district, who could desperately use this housing and who frequently make less money than teachers even. So I'm fine with further restricting it to PAUSD personnel.
That would help a lot, especially, you know, with the substitute teachers and the aides and so forth. They're very valuable. So I appreciate you considering it. Thank you.
Yep, long as the maker, the secondor is fine with that.
Okay, I see no more lights. So let's vote on this revised AA.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
No.
Councilmember DeBois?
No.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
And not seeing Councilmember Cormac, motion carries four to two.
Okay. All right, so we'll now vote on section A.
Could I, could I?
Yes.
May I ask?
Vice Mayor Koo.
I wanted to ask the maker and secondor if they would consider adding a D and to add to the housing element document, the the auditor's regional housing needs to audit. The Freddie Mac's research and perspective paper highlights titled "The Housing Supply Shortage: State of the States", Department of Finance's population for the period between July 1, 2020, and July 1, 2021. And Embarcadero Institute's analysis, double counting in the latest housing needs assessment.
So I would, I would not accept it because I think those are valid political arguments that we should be making, but are not appropriate for the housing element.
Then if?
And, I'm sorry, maker? Councilmember DeBois?
No, you stated it. Well, that's the concern I have as well.
Okay.
If I might just take a chance and put it to an unfriendly amendment? If I?
Okay, if you have a second?
Can I get a second? If not, not.
I don't see a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, looks like we can vote on this motion?
Okay, and just noting for the council, I was not aware that Councilmember Cormac was recused from this item. So I reflected that on the previous vote as well. Okay. All right, Councilmember DeBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Voting on A. We're voting on A, right?
Just on A, yes.
Large letter A.
A large letter A, no.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to two.
Okay, great. And now we'll go to the main motion.
I have the residual motion, not the main.
Residual, okay.
Yes, that's okay. So just on item B now. Okay. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBois?
Yes.
And Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously with the recusal of Vice Mayor, or recusal of Councilmember Cormac.
Well, thanks to everyone involved. The work's not done, but it's a major milestone. And thank you to the public who participated and to the members of the community who put in many months working on this. So it's a great accomplishment. And thanks again for everybody's work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
All right. Shall we go ahead with two remaining items that are probably pretty short in duration? I don't know if Councilmember Cormac may be, may be rejoining us for these items. She coming? Okay. So the first is an approval of amendments to the employment agreements between the City of Palo Alto and council-appointed officers, specifically the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. And who? It's the?
Okay. Mayor Burt, for the record, I thought I heard Vice Mayor Koo vote no when we were voting on the main item A, but apparently she voted yes.
That's correct. She voted yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure the record is correct.
We won't re-vote.
For, for the record, that then should be 5-1, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
No, for the, for the final one?
On the
For B?
Final part A. It was not the final motion.
Right, under big letter A.
Big letter A.
That's 5-1.
Yes.
Final was 6-0.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, and who will be presenting from staff, human resources?
Actually, we do not have a staff presentation. Would note that this follows council direction on evaluations.
Okay. So let's open this to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have no request to speak from the public.
Councilmember Cormac.
I'll move the staff recommendation for these three amendments.
Second.
All right, would you like to speak to your motion?
We're so fortunate here in the City of Palo Alto. Those of us who have the opportunity to live here, and we're fortunate to have some really outstanding staff members supporting us. And, you know, it's certainly been a privilege for me to work with them over these past four years. And I'm grateful that they show up every day and work for everyone here in the community.
And Councilmember Phil Seth, did you want to speak to your second?
Plus one to that.
Okay. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I also want to thank staff. I know a lot, a lot of people put in hard work. We're here really, really late at night. So that can't be underestimated. And, you know, we're, we're in a very politically charged city, right? So that one, it's a lot of criticism. So definitely appreciate everyone's work on this. In general, I'm supportive of what's here, but I disagree with the form of compensation. So, so what I'd like to do is, for me, I don't know how good, I think this motion's all or nothing, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to group Molly and Leslie, or actually, our city attorney and our city clerk together, and Ed separately. Because I fundamentally believe that if you think about a CEO of a company or a city, it's better for the pay for the, for the chief executive, the chief executive, be it a city or a company, to be variable versus fixed. And I know it's our tradition to have a relatively high fixed compensation. But I think, especially for the leader of the organization, it's better for that pay to be variable. And so I'm not in favor of having high and increasing the relatively high base and making it even higher. I think it's better to tie the compensation to, to a variable pay. That way, the goals are aligned. So for instance, if the city performs well, the city manager makes more and vice versa. So, and for that reason, I can't, I cannot agree to the form of compensation that's proposed here. So I'll, I'll like the motion to be split between the city manager and everyone else. Thank you.
So I will agree to splitting it that way. And Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, I, I too just wanted to say that I think we're lucky. We have the staff we do. We have real professionals and we have a city manager who has a track record of getting projects done. He led our staff through COVID pandemic. And our, our CEO staff led the way by taking pay cuts. We're in a difficult budget situation. And and our city attorney, there's a lot, you know, the public doesn't see with, with all of our CAOs. But the city attorney, we've really aborted large judgments in, in the whole against the city. She manages a strong team of professionals as well as outsourced legal help. And, you know, for a city with our range of activities, I think our, we've managed our legal costs quite well. And then finally, I wanted to, to recognize our city clerk, who's really renovated the office. She's made a lot of great changes, taking on additional projects. And, and finally, no, it's not part of this, but, you know, our auditing, our auditing function as well has also had new life. We really got performance upgrade there. And even though some people at the time didn't want us to outsource that position, you know, we gained access to a lot of expertise that we didn't have before. So just wanted to say thank you. So just wanted to say thank you to our, our CAO, county-appointed officers. Thanks.
Okay, I see no more lights. So can the clerk please call the roll? On, this would be first on the, the city attorney and the city clerk.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and we will now vote on the second motion regarding the city manager's compensation.
Okay, Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. So that concludes this item. And then we have our final item is a potential nomination of a council member to serve on the Board of Directors of the Santa Clara Valley Transit Authority for a two-year term beginning in January 2023. And Vice Mayor Coop, as our policy advisory group, Group Two representative, did you want to kick this off?
Sure, sure. Thank you very much. For the past two years, we have Mayor Burt serving at the VTA Board. And he has, he has the experience. And in addition to that, he has been collaborating with the AdHoc Committee with Mountain View and Sunnyvale. So there has been a lot of collaboration and discussion. And our term is coming up where the Group Two North County is going to be electing, electing the VTA Board member again. And our bylaws or our guidance document has specifically mentioned that if the current serving board member announces that they would like to continue for the second term, that they could do so by the announcement. And with that, may I make a motion? With that, I would like to make a motion to nominate Mayor Burt to continue in the position as to serve on the Board of Directors at the Santa Clara County VTA for two-year term beginning in January 2023.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Did you wish to speak further to your motion?
No, I think I've already spoken. Thank you so much.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, so Mayor Burt, how, how much time have you, has it taken for you to be on the VTA Board?
It's a lot. It's more than I had anticipated, and in part because the VTA has really stepped up their engagement on governance and in part because of critiques that had gone forward. So it's, it's not just the main VTA Board meetings, but multiple committees and briefings on a regular basis. So I don't know, it's pretty substantial. Yeah.
That was my impression. And that's why I'm supporting you. I think, I think transportation is a real passion of yours. And it seemed like you were, you've really spent a significant amount of the time in this area and really developed expertise in this area. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka?
A quick question. When do we have to decide on this?
When do we decide on what?
What does the VTA need us to decide on who to appoint?
The bylaws, if I may, the bylaws for the Group Two North County group, basically in their bylaws, it states between November 1st and December, we would have to put forward a name.
Okay, yeah, the reason why I was asking is because as we know, we have three new councilmembers coming on board. And I thought it'd be good for us to wait till the, to the new members are seated, which, which is, you know, you know, early January. So I don't know if that's a possibility. But if so, I'd like to see if we can, it may be the same result. But I'd like to see if we could wait just a few weeks to allow the new, the new members to also weigh in.
I, according to the bylaws, you know, it's, it's between November 1st and December. And we have other cities that are waiting to hear back on the nomination and who our city has forwarded. So as you know, some cities have their reorganization at the end of the year. And our city is at the beginning of the year. So some of the dates for these kind of positions do not align. And we do have a, we are working with other cities. So there's an obligation to put that forward as agreed with the previous North County officials.
And one thing I just should share is that at the end of this year, we're having an exceptionally high turnover of the VTA Board. It appears that perhaps seven of 12 members will turn over. And we're going to be losing the majority of our experience there, which has been one of the critiques that was leveled against the VTA governance was lack of continuity and experience. Councilmember Cormac?
Can I ask a process question first? Were we going to take public comment?
You're correct that we need to take public comments, but feel free to ask your question first.
Okay, my first question is for staff. So can the next council revoke this decision if it's made tonight in the same way they did two years ago?
So the, the procedural document that Councilmember Coop is describing is not a model of clarity on all of these issues. It does call for the election to occur, as Vice Mayor Coop stated, no earlier than November and no later than December of every third year or as, or as needed by a majority of the group. So I think what's contemplated here is that the city makes the nomination at the council level. And then the group, the Group Two working group then confirms or in theory declines that nomination. If that were, and that that be concluded during the calendar year, because the term is over then. And so that then people are ready to serve then beginning in January. If for whatever reason that Group Two were, were not to occur, in theory Palo Alto could make a different decision in January. And I believe that there was some timing that unfolded like that a couple of years ago.
Okay, thanks for that. So yeah, it's not only the model of, a model, it is not only not a model of clarity, it's got some glaring spelling errors. It sounds like people are going to have to provide a weather report. Anyway, we'll move on. This process is opaque, as I said two years ago. And unfortunately, it's been abused by this, this council. I think rotation of this role is actually healthy for, for all of our communities. I'll just state that as a, as a general, general thought. And then most importantly, it is clear, I think to all of us, a meaningful and structural reform of the VTA Board is urgently needed. Multiple grand jury reports have indicated that. And we had a proposal for that put forward by a former council member from Palo Alto who serves in the Assembly. Our current representative did not support that effort. And therefore I cannot support our current representative to extend the term.
Okay, so we, can we go to members of the public and then return to the? Okay, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? We do not. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a substitute motion that we delay the voting on this until the new council members are seated next year.
Second.
Okay. I see no, did you want to speak to that further?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Did you want to speak to your second?
No, thank you. If it was.
Okay, Councilmember Phil Seth?
I certainly have no problem supporting Councilmember Burt representing us a second term. Okay, that said, you know, we had a couple of years ago, a situation where the outgoing council had one preference and the incoming council had a different preference and, you know, then they didn't align. And in those cases, I think, you know, really, you know, really it's, it's the incoming council that ought to be able to make the decision. So I have no problem supporting the current mayor continuing a second term. But I think the decision ought to be made by the next council. And so as a procedural thing, I think I'm going to support the motion here.
Okay, let's vote on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you need to call for public comment?
We did.
Oh, I apologize.
Councilmember Stone?
No.
Vice Mayor Coop?
No.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
No.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
No.
Motion fails three to four.
Okay, and we'll go to the main motion. I'm like, no, I'm, I'm showing Winter's hand up.
It is now, but it was not when we called for public comment.
Gotcha.
Okay, and for the main motion, Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
No.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Motion carries five to two.
Okay, thank you. That concludes this item. And we will now go to council member comments and questions and announcements. Councilmember Cormac?
Thank you, Mayor Burt. We had a very interesting Bosque meeting last week. And I wanted to just touch on two points for my colleagues. The first is that the representative from San Francisco PUC spoke briefly about the memorandum of understanding that was signed earlier this month. And I believe the city manager provided the links to that information to the council earlier today. I, I asked a direct question about when the new flows would start. And the answer was that the negotiations needed to continue. So I know that is the interest of this council, and I wanted to share that update. The second thing, and I wanted to start by thanking Palo Alto resident Dave Warner for participating in the stakeholder feedback on the demand study sensitivity analysis. And if anyone's really interested, feel free to look through the slides we received. Starting slide 37, I think, is an example of the increasingly realistic demand projections. And this was a sensitivity analysis that many in the community have been asking for, you know, at least the five years I've been connected with this. So really pleased to see that some really interesting work done and really helping us figure out how we're gonna move forward. Thanks.
All right, I see no other lights. Oh, Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, this was actually more of a question. So really excited about the new kind of point-to-point shuttle that the city is going to be launching. I'm just curious, what are the plans to, to market that or advertise that? The city manager could speak to that for a second.
Sure, I just note that should be on your council agenda. You may even get the report this Thursday. So.
Okay.
If not this Thursday, hopefully the following. So more information forthcoming.
Thank you.
Hey, on that note, the meeting is adjourned.